Okay, it seems like we're up and running, right?
We are live on Facebook and the webinar is up and running.
Okay, at 6:03 I'll call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to the Tuesday, June 15th, 2021. Let's perhaps everyone mute so that we're not having interference. I'm not sure who is where the interference is coming from, but if everyone could just mute. Perfect. As I'm sure most people are aware, the governor's declaration of a state of emergency ended as of 12:01 a.m. this morning. And as such, strictly speaking, so did the ability of public bodies such as the Cohasset School Committee to meet virtually. However, in anticipation of the cessation of the state of emergency, Governor Baker had sought through legislation to extend certain measures, COVID-19 measures, that had been previously enacted through executive order. The legislature, although it was presumed that they would have resolved this issue by now, have not resolved it in advance of the termination of the state of emergency. Therefore, because this was an important meeting where we are reorganizing, setting the upcoming school committee meeting schedule and subcommittee assignments, I did not, and we had posted this previously as being held in virtual format, I made the decision that I thought it made more sense, given that this just happened today. In order not to lose participation or viewership, as I'm sure many folks at home were planning on still participating through our ordinary channels. And I did not want to risk not having a quorum because our members themselves were planning on attending virtually. I have made the decision to have this meeting held virtually. Given some of those considerations I just mentioned. That said, if the matter is not resolved by the time of our next regularly scheduled meeting, then that meeting will be held in person as we will have the time to adapt. At that point, if it is resolved by that time, then we will react accordingly and we will host the meeting in whatever format we think is appropriate, given whatever resolution is reached within the legislature. So that is why we are still in virtual format. With that said, I'd ask that committee members that are present, please indicate so in roll call, Mrs. Coleri. Mr. Dial.
Present.
Mr. Kearney.
Present.
Mr. Saint Orange.
Present.
And I am present Craig McClellan at 6:05 p.m. Let the record reflect that all members are present. And we welcome our newly elected member Lance Dial. Thank you, thank you, thank you for willing to dedicate your time to the betterment of the school district for our community's children. We look forward to working with you. The very first order of business is the reorganization of the school committee. At the outset of each year, we reorganize and decide which members will hold which positions. The way we will do this is I will, we will start with the chair position, move to the vice chairperson position, and then we will move to the secretary. I will, from our handbook, read the description of the duties of each position. The chairperson's just a little bit longer, but most of them are fairly brief. Then individually, we will take nominations for each position. We can take as many nominations as people want to make. Each nomination will need to be seconded and then we will vote on them. Okay, so like I said, we will start with the chairperson. And the duties of the chairperson are as follows. The chairperson of the Cohasset School Committee has the same powers as any other member of the committee to vote upon all measures coming before it, to offer resolutions and to discuss questions. The chairperson will perform those duties that are consistent with their office and those required by law, state regulations and this committee. In carrying out these responsibilities, the chairperson will sign the instruments, acts and orders necessary to carry out state requirements and the will of the committee, collaborate with the superintendent in the building of the committee's agendas, confer with the superintendent on crucial matters that may occur between committee meetings, appoint subcommittees, call special meetings of the committee as is necessary, act as the public spokesperson for the committee at all times as this responsibility is specifically delegated to others. Conduct Cohasset School Committee meetings in an orderly fashion. As the presiding officer of at all meetings of the committee, the chairperson will call the meeting to order at the appointed time, announce the business to come before the committee in its proper order, enforce the committee's policies relating to the order of business and the conduct of meetings, reorganize, excuse me, recognize persons who desire to speak and protect the speaker who has the floor from disturbance or interference. Explain what the effect of a motion would be if this is not clear to members. Restrict discussion to the question when a motion is before the committee, answer all parliamentary inquiries and put motions to a vote stating definitively and clearly the vote and result thereof. Those are the duties of the chairperson of the school committee. So at this time, are there any nominations for chairperson for the 2021-2022 year?
I'd like to nominate you, Craig McClellan.
Okay, are there any other nominations for anyone else other than me? Okay, seeing none, is there a second to Mrs. Coleri's nomination of Craig McClellan for chairperson?
I'd like to second that.
Seconded by Mr. Kearney. All in favor, please vote in roll call, Mrs. Coleri.
Aye.
Mr. Dial.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. Saint Orange.
Aye.
And I will abstain, of course, so that motion carries or that nomination carries by a vote of four ayes and one abstention. I will take it as a compliment, though it could be an insult, and I will continue to do my best to run effective meetings. And I thank you all for your confidence in me. I'll give it one more year. Next is the vice chairperson role. The duties of the vice chairperson are as follows. The vice chairperson of the committee will act in the absence of the chairperson as the presiding officer of the committee and will perform such other duties as may be delegated or assigned to them by the chair. So at this point, are there any nominations for vice chairperson for the 2021-2022 year?
I will nominate Ashley Coleri.
Okay, are there any other nominations for any other member other than Mrs. Coleri at this time? Seeing none, is there a second for Mrs. Saint Orange's nomination for Mrs. Coleri as vice chairperson of the school committee? I will second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Dial. So all in favor of the nomination for Ashley Coleri for vice chairperson of the Cohasset School Committee for the 2021-2022 year, please indicate so in roll call, Mrs. Coleri.
Aye.
Mr. Dial.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. Saint Orange.
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. So that nomination carries, of course, by a vote of four ayes, one abstention.
I did not abstain. I voted for myself.
You did vote for yourself.
It was unanimous.
It was a unanimous nomination. Great.
Yeah. Thank you all.
I'm sorry.
You're just more humble than I am, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
You were supposed to do it. I don't know. Either way, the nomination carries and you are the vice chairperson again, Mrs. Coleri. Position of secretary. The duties of secretary are as follows. The secretary will keep or cause to be kept an accurate journal of all CSC meetings, will comply with state law and committee policy regarding notifications of meetings and will render such reports as may be required by the state or the town. The Cohasset School Committee clerk fulfills this role at regular Cohasset School Committee meetings. So are there any nominations for secretary at this time?
I'd like to nominate Lydia Saint Orange.
There is a nomination for Lydia Saint Orange. Are there any other nominations for any other members other than Mrs. Saint Orange? Seeing none, is there a second for Mrs. Saint, excuse me, Mrs. Coleri's nomination of Mrs. Saint Orange for secretary for the 2021-2022 year?
I'll second the motion.
That nomination is seconded by Mr. Dial. All in favor, Mrs. Coleri.
Aye.
Mr. Dial.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. Saint Orange.
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. That nomination also unanimously carries. And so Mrs. Saint Orange will continue to be the secretary of the Cohasset School Committee for the upcoming year. That is all the special positions that we need to vote on in terms of reorganization. And so thank you very much for your cooperation there. And having done that, we'll move into the sort of regular agenda items, starting with public comment. Public comment is reserved. Yes, Mrs. Saint Orange?
I'm sorry, and perhaps I'm, it's the wrong order, but do we do subcommittee reorganization too, or is that later?
That's later.
Okay, sorry, I was off schedule.
No problem, no problem. So we move into public comment, and as I always state, public comment is really reserved for topics of discussion or comments related to items that are not on the agenda. So if you have comment or discussion points as to something on the agenda, wait until we arrive at that point in the agenda. Otherwise, please speak your piece now and I will give everyone a few moments to do so. Using the Q and A feature on Zoom. Okay, I don't see any public comments, so we'll move on to the next regularly placed agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. And I will turn the meeting over at this point to our superintendent of schools, Dr. Patrick Sullivan.
Thank you Chairman McClellan, and let me just begin by welcoming Mr. Dial to the school committee. Since I've been here in Cohasset for four years now, it's great to see someone like you stepping up because your family's been so involved with the schools. And that's, I really admire that, and it's just a pleasure to have you on the team. I look forward to collaboration with you and the reorganized committee. I don't have a very large agenda here to talk about. I do want to talk about Juneteenth, which as you know, is commemorating what is recognized as the end of the slavery in the United States, June 19th, 1865. We are recognizing it this year in Massachusetts. I believe it's the first year it's an official holiday in the state. It does fall on a Saturday, but we have some events happening in our district mainly on Friday, in our school, I should say, in our schools. And then next year in 2022, it'll actually be a celebrated day off, so we'll be celebrating Juneteenth on a Monday because it occurs on a Sunday and that's in our calendar. Some of the things that we have happening in our district on Friday is we have a group of high school students led by Mrs. Crimmens, who will be going and going to both Osgood and Deer Hill and presenting and doing activities with the kids around a very age appropriate for the individual schools for diversity, self-identity, and basically themes around freedom and justice. And at the middle school, they're actually making a freedom quilt with the symbols of justice, freedom and equality. And looking forward to that. And I know in talking with Chairman Coleri, we're, not Chair, but School Committee Member Coleri, we are hoping maybe to do something with that as a community moving forward as well. And then there'll be all sorts of activities in the, in the schools that will all be age appropriate and obviously talking about the history of what Juneteenth is about too. So we're, we're really excited about that and ready to make that a regular celebration in our school year as we move forward. Without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Scollins and to Mrs. Sarwanka, who I think are going to kind of lead the rest of the superintendent update here because they have some important curriculum and other matters to discuss. So I'll let, I'll let Dr. Scollins and Mr. Sarwanka take it over.
Thank you. So as the year comes to a close, it doesn't slow down. It just did, because there's still a lot happening, even though we have just a little over a week left of school. I just wanted to update you that the literacy committee is meeting tomorrow. And that group is made up of teachers, administrators and the parent. And tomorrow, we're just going to spend time getting to know each other. It is virtual. Hopefully next year we'll be meeting in person for most of the time. And, but tomorrow we're going to introduce ourselves and we're just going to talk about what our current literacy is in Cohasset and some of the things that we are doing currently, which I'm going to share with you. And then we're going to look at our schedule and create our schedules for next year. So I'm really excited to pull this group together. Many of the staff and administrators actually were part of the literacy committee several years ago and did a lot of work. So I'm looking forward to really seeing them in action as a committee. In addition, we're continuing to focus on elementary literacy. And as I had spoken with you a while ago around the Student Opportunity Act, we had created a plan that would address the new guidance on dyslexia screening and really looking at our youngest population in the area of reading and literacy. So we want to really make sure that we're catching our students as young as possible. So if there's any kind of learning challenges happening, we want to be able to address those. So we are working closely with the Sarwanka's office and really looking at how we're going to roll that out. So we are, have, will be purchasing the SheaWits as a screener, and then we're looking at some other opportunities of assessment for our younger students. In addition to that, we are collaborating with a consulting group, Teaching Learning and Alliance, also known as TLA. And they came in and did an informal needs assessment of literacy at both Osgood and Deer Hill a couple of weeks ago. And that process included the consultant walking through the buildings, looking around at what it looks like in our classrooms. Teachers were teaching literacy during those times, so she could get a picture of what's happening. And then she pulled together focus groups and really led them through a process of exploration and on her end to see what is happening, what are their desires and what are their, do they think their, the needs are for themselves as educators and then for our students. So that was a very, very well attended and very well received by the teachers. There's a lot of excitement because they would like to see us move forward in looking at our literacy. And so we're going to actually meet the principals at the elementary level myself with the consultants on Friday, and they're going to debrief us on what they observed and also give us some thoughts about what we can do next year and into the future as we look at our elementary literacy and roll out the next plans. One of the things we did talk about is the importance of offering opportunities to our teachers to learn more about teaching of reading. All teachers are taught how to teach reading, but when they're in their undergrad and their masters, however, there's, there's more out there. So we want to make sure the teachers have that opportunity to have that. So that will be part of next year as we look forward to looking at what we have for literacy. We have so many things that are wonderful that are happening, but we really want to have a little more of a cohesive aligned program. And we are taking a little bit of time, one, so that we can build skills and strategies for our teachers and also give them time to implement the second year of our math program. As you know, we implemented Bridges Math Program at the elementary level this year, and it was a great success. But at the same time, it still need another year and a full year, not a hybrid year to implement. So it's important that we give that time to take hold also. In addition, we will be meeting with the reading and math specialists at the elementary levels along with the principals to review the end of the year assessment data. I will tell you that right now, some preliminary K2 reading data shows really solid student growth, which we're really happy about. So that was really some of those basic fundamental skills, in particular in kindergarten. We're very happy to see what, what successes the students had. So that was really positive. And as I meet with the reading specialists and math specialists and principals, they'll have a better understanding of all of the growth for our students and anywhere that we may need to shore up for next year. In addition, we've pulled together a team of teachers and administrators to explore assessments to be used to monitor progress. Right now at the elementary level, there is a series of literacy and reading assessments that we do three times a year. We do it in the fall and then in the middle of the year in January, February, and then at the end of the year. And it gives us some ways to benchmark our students' growth and needs. So we are looking at some other assessment tools that we might be able to use that will be able to not only look at our K through five, but potentially through eighth grade or even 12th grade. So we're meeting with a couple of vendors this week and next week, and then we'll be making some decisions about what assessment will be putting in for that. Mrs. Sarwanka, anything I should add about the literacy piece? Or do you think we got it all?
I think we've got it all. It's just really exciting and it was really exciting to see how in, you know, this late point in the year, how enthusiastic all of the elementary teachers were to see the representatives from TLA and work on reading with them.
Yeah, it was very, yeah, I was, I was amazed because they are tired and have worked so hard this year. And they were, they overwhelmingly kept saying, let's go, we're ready. So that was really exciting. So I agree, Barbara, that was a nice, a nice shout out. And then just around the starting summer learning program, so excited, and I think I told you this the last meeting, we didn't have to turn anyone away. We were able to expand the program. So all of that information has gone out to families that were interested and had applied for the program. So that will start on July 12th, which is very exciting. And our staff is a mix of staff that are currently professionals in the Cohasset Public Schools and then a couple of people from outside of the side of the district. So just as a heads up to Lisa Farrell, the principal at Osgood, she's actually the director of the summer program. So her and I have been working closely. So you'll be hearing more from her as the time comes closer. And then finally, we met with the wellness committee last week, and I know that Mr. Kearney is going to give you a little more information. But we were offered the opportunity to participate in the Departments of Ed's Wellness Grant Program again next year, which will mean that we will continue our work with our health coaches provided by Desi. And that's been very good. She has a good grasp of obviously wellness and the policies that are in place and the programming. And so she's been able to guide us and help us focus on what we're going to do next. So one of the things we will be doing is adding family and student representatives to our wellness committee. So be watching for that. That will come out in late August or early September, and we'll be looking for people who are interested in that. So that will be a really nice addition to our, our program and our committee and certainly something, one of our first things that we can check off of our action plan for our wellness committee. So that's my update. Any questions?
Any questions?
My only question is, thank you very much for that update, Dr. Scollins. My only question is, you mentioned that people should keep an eye out for the wellness committee information. That'll come out directly from the district at some point later and okay.
Well, yes, I'll send out, I'll probably send an email out in, in, you know, August or September, and then I'll probably have it in the navigator too. So yeah, it'll be nice. We really think it's important to have the community, and even if there's a community member who wants to be on the wellness committee also, you don't have to be, you don't have to be a family that has a student enrolled, right? You may be someone else who wants to be part of it. So we really wanted to expand that because we think having as many people involved in the process will, can not only grow, but only benefit our students, right? Because there are so many resources out there. I mean, we already have a nice relationship with Holly Hill Farm, but it's important to grow that because wellness is the key. Not just their physical, but their social, emotional health, right? If our students are whole, meaning healthy in all aspects, they can't help but be successful in school. So, thank you. Very important.
Thank you, Mrs. Coleri. Mr. Dial, do you have any questions for Dr. Scollins or Mrs. Sarwanka?
None. Thank you for that fulsome update.
Mrs. Saint Orange, any questions? Okay, I don't have any questions either. Thank you both so much. Thank you for bringing.
I just want to mention one further thing, and then I think my, I can move on to my guest. Obviously, I have a guest here and we'll introduce him and why he's here. But we are in full stride with our strategic planning. And we met as a strategic planning steering team today, was very successful. We're, we're ready, we believe we'll be ready to, to present the results, at least the content for approval. Probably next meeting for the school committee to get your voice and approval before we move to sort of a finalized product. Remember, this is a really important plan because it really, it drives all the school improvement plans, it drives our leadership plans and goals, and then it drives all of our teachers' goals. All of our teacher goals will link to this plan. So it really is a, you know, a straight arrow keeping our district moving in a cohesive direction. And, you know, I want to thank you, anybody who's watching who collaborated on the survey or who helped on the steering team. And really, it's been a wonderful effort. We're excited about the way it's going. So we're, we'll be excited to report out next meeting on that. And then that's it for my personal updates and obviously Mrs. Sarwanka and Dr. Scollins. But if I can move on, Chairman McClellan, I'll introduce our guest unless you have any other items you want to discuss.
Please do.
Okay, super. So I'd like to introduce Mr. Bob Erlinson. You might know Mr. Erlinson is head of Cohasset Teachers Association, but of course, he also is a science teacher at, at our middle school. He also heads up our robotics efforts at the middle and high school. And then, you know, he also does this, helps lead with others, this wonderful trip to the Grand Canyon, which I know he's here to talk about. And I will leave it to you, Mr. Erlinson. I don't know if Mrs. Jewel and Mr. Fortin were joining you or?
Mr. Fortin, Mrs. Jewel can't make it. Mr. Fortin is actually on the, on the call, but he wasn't able to join the webinar. So he's in and around. So I apologize for his missingness. And our grand classroom contact.
Mr. Fortin's actually in the attendees, excuse me. He's actually in attendees, so I don't know if you want to.
Shall I promote him, Mr. Erlinson?
You could, that'd be great.
I will. And who is, what's the name of the gentleman or a woman who is the person?
But he won't be able to join us. He has some parent meetings. He was not able to switch those around with the change in the date. I've talked to him extensively, so I'm prepared to answer any questions on, on, on his end with that. So I think we'll be all fine. But I do want to apologize. I'm in my car right now. We, we are having our CTA spring social as we speak. So I just stepped out here, but so if someone comes by and Zoom bombs me, it's because they're just saying goodbye. So dodge those out a little bit here, but no, we, we have been talking as a group, the grand classroom group that has done two trips to the Grand Canyon for the eighth grade. And over the past month or two, as things have improved more and more, we realized we really want to give this a shot again for next year. No, obviously, this is a tentative situation in a lot of ways. But we're prepared to put this forward, a very, very similar trip to what we did in the years past with some obvious differences. We do have COVID protocol that we're going to institute that is the grand, grand classrooms kind of a protocol that they've put together. And also, we're considering maybe doing a high school trip for the ninth and 10th graders who were not able to do a trip in the eighth grade. And we are in discussions with grand classroom for those students in eighth grade last year who, who had the trip canceled on them. I know it was with great regret that a lot of those parents and families weren't able to get a full refund. We are in discussions with grand classroom, we're getting a discount for those students that, that had the trip canceled out from underneath them so that they can maybe recoup some of their losses. So, so that's something we're hoping to do. The trips that we're planning, a few were on the board two years ago when we first presented this. We basically fly into Las Vegas. We do a tour of the national parks, Zion, Bryce, Grand Canyon, and we do a stop off in Sedona. And just have, it was a marvelous trip. The first year we did it was just amazing. The kids really, really took to it. It was one of the first trips, a lot of them that are taken by themselves, you know, without their parents around. So they really were, their eyes were open to this new experience and they really had a magical moment. The next year, I was unable to go next year, but the same thing happened the year after. We were hoping to have that happen for a third year when they got canceled from underneath. So, so we'd like to get back into the saddle, so to speak, with the trip. Hopefully have a good maybe 20, 25 kids that we can hopefully take out there is our, is our goal. In addition, Mr. Fortin High School, in the same timeframe, in April break, we'd like to see if we can get these ninth and 10th graders, if anyone there is interested in a similar trip. They would probably fly out maybe even the same planes, but then we diverge into our own trips. Not going to have the high school kids with the eighth grade. They would do some similar areas, but on a different schedule, different hotels and so on. But just kind of give them the opportunity that they might have missed. And then, of course, you know, make it up to those kids, current, well, next year's 10th graders that really were, were suffered because of the cancellation last year. So that's our overall goal. And if you want, I can talk about the COVID protocol. What we're hoping to do, we're not going to, as a private group, we're not going to require vaccinations from the students. We are definitely going to encourage them, and we do want to have kind of proof of that if we are. But grand classroom, what they've been doing is that if they have, if you're vaccinated student, then there's no issue if there's contact tracing someone. But if there's, if you're not unvaccinated, then there's a contact tracing or a, a positive case. What they've been doing is flying the parents out at their cost and putting the parent up with their child in hotel room. They won't be able to continue the trip, but that's what they've But that's what they've been instituting. For the most part, people have been having their kids vaccinated. It's not an issue. So that's the only kind of difference from the trip in the past. And I'd be, I'd welcome any questions you have in that regards. I wish Greg was here to kind of answer those, but I feel pretty confident I can kind of answer any of those if you have them. But that's the overall goal. So we're hoping to start promoting this even before the end of the school year. And the high school trip are still in the, in the planning stages of what it actually would look like. We might put the information out there for those ninth and 10th graders if they're interested in taking part. And hopefully get this going. I'll take any questions if you guys have any.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Erlinson. Are there any questions in the committee? Mrs. Cleary?
I don't have any questions, but I think this sounds like a really wonderful trip. I've been to a few of these places. They're all really very interesting and full of learning opportunities. So thank you for providing this opportunity to the students.
Good luck.
Thank you, Mrs. Cleary. Mr. Dial, any questions for Mr. Erlinson regarding the canyon trip?
One, one question and then, and then one comment. I'll, I'll do them in reverse order. I agree with Ms. Cleary. Great idea. Some of my favorite memories from being in middle school were these trips that we would take when I, when I was a kid. It's just a great way for kids to socialize on different footings and build relationships and grow. So I, I fully support that. The question is on, on the COVID protocols, is that written in stone at this point? Or is that something that can be reevaluated as time goes on? Because I imagine that the conditions in the world will change by the time we, we, you know, wheels up for this trip.
Yeah, everything is fluid. My big concern in terms of, of any changes, if, if all of a sudden there, there comes new variants or other issues where travel is restricted again. One of the things we're going to insist upon this year is a much more rigorous insurance policy that will allow parents to get their entire refund back. When it comes to, you know, the, the, the travel in the States, we, we are thinking that this is going to, especially with the vaccines and any boosters that they have, they really is going to allow the freedom to, 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 to keep travel going. So that's why we thought it was, is a worthwhile risk to, to start promoting a trip like this. So we'll see. I mean, it's definitely going to be, you know, we'll see how the other world's looking then. We feel pretty confident that it, it, it'll be as open as it is right now, is, is our hope.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. Mrs. St. Orange, do you have any questions for Mr. Erlinson or Mr. Forten?
Um, yeah, I'm just curious. I remember doing trips like this when I was a student at Cohasset High. And I remember very fondly that there were some kind of after school classes and meetings prior to the trip, and we're talking about like the, kind of like the life science aspect of things, the natural history of the areas we were going to study. Do you pair anything like that with the trip? I know that so much learning happens when you're there. I should know if there was kind of curriculum leading up to it.
The first year, we actually did, we actually had a lot of meetings leading up to it. And we actually built a three dimensional map of one of the locations we went to. Currently, we, last year when they went, they did not do as much of that. We were thinking about putting in a, a aspect where they're, you know, trying to find a middle school in the area. Maybe even on some of the reservations out there, just maybe do some Penn Pal work. Possibly meet some students there with that. That was something we talked about last year. But it didn't get instituted. So as a science teacher in eighth grade, it, it, you know, it's, it's, it's always on my mind that we'll bring in the classroom as we, as, as we can. We haven't had many, any discussions on what that will look like this year, but we have done in the past. We very well could do that in the future too.
Yeah, I just remember really valuing that as a student and just thinking like upon arrival, realizing I had learned so much. And then to be able to experience it was, was really priceless. But it looks like an amazing trip and I, I hope that, you know, conditions continue to improve and, and everything goes off without a hitch. Because what an awesome opportunity for all of you. And if you need any chaperones, let me know.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. St. Orange. Mr. Erlinson, Mr. Forten, I, I'm, I'm always in, in support of these types of learning experiences. I think they're, they're extremely enriching. I, I also really appreciate your continued interest in making sure this becomes a reality for the students, especially your thought about the ninth and 10th graders who unfortunately had this strip from them. And it's a sort of, I'm sure, considered a bit of a rite of passage for eighth graders. And I'm sure they eagerly anticipate being able to participate in this. And I think it's great that we're going to include them. My, my questions with regards to any sort of traveling with our students always relate to safety and monitoring, especially where it's a coed situation. I know this is a well-established trip. I'm sure you have some similarly well-established protocols in place, but I like to know them. So I, I'm wondering, it looks like it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not camping. It's hotel accommodations for the sleeping accommodations. So that's great. I, I wonder, I noticed that it's about an eight to one student to chaperone ratio currently for the eighth grade. And you don't have the numbers specifically. I don't think you guys know them yet for the, for the ninth and 10th. I'm wondering if you plan on having a similar ratio because I think that is a pretty good ratio in terms of chaperones.
Yeah, even lower, about a six or seven to one. We're hoping for 25 students with four chaperones in the middle school.
Right.
Similar in the high school. We're prepared to go as high as maybe 30 or 35 students. But any more than that, you start losing that small group feel. We want to keep it to one, one tour bus as well. I know in the past, we've had a security person in the hallway overnight that the grand classroom pays for. So, so we do have monitoring going on while everyone's getting some deserved rest. So that, and, and I know for the eighth graders especially, we were concerned about that in the first years. The, the nice thing about it is that they, they really are on their best behavior because they're in, out of their element. And they, they, they really are kind of hesitant. And, and so their, their minds are actually a little more open, a little more able to follow directions because of the fact that they're just not in their comfort zone. Ninth and 10th graders, now they may be a different story. So the, I know Mr. Forten and the, the chaperones will have their own experiences with that. But I imagine we'll have the same procedure with chaperone.
That we absolutely, and, and one thing to keep in mind, the itinerary that students have on these trips, you know, every day, it's really jam packed and there's, there's a lot that's happening. You know, students will end the day with a discussion with, you know, the teachers and also, you know, the guides that lead the trip about like, you know, what they saw. There may be some sort of like padlet, you know, style diary that they're able to reflect upon. You know, they're given a little bit of free time and then, you know, they're, 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 they're exhausted and, and they need that sleep. So they're ready for the next day. Now, I will just mention that I've done this trip the two times that we've run it. And it's been an absolutely amazing experience for students. And I would even say life changing, just to be able to get out of the South Shore and see the national parks of this country. But I always tell parents that, you know, being a chaperone, this is something that we take, you know, very, very seriously. And it's a huge responsibility. And, you know, I always tell my students in the classroom, you can't take the dad out of me. And, you know, we are very protective of those students. And they are reminded on a regular basis that they do represent the town of Cohasset. And we hold them to that standard and they respond very, very well to it.
Excellent. And are there regular sort of head count checks as you, you know, proceed through these parks and such?
Um, yeah, like, for example, one of the, one of the policies that we've been using is at the beginning of the trip, every single student, every, every single person on the trip is assigned a number and we just do the count off. And it's, you know, it's a visual thing. It's auditory. You know, we get in the rhythm and it, it happens. E- e- every time we need to go ahead and get to a transition point, we count off. You know, the bus every single time. We don't leave unless that count off is correct. You know, it's, 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 it's religiously dumb.
Okay. And then with the hotel rooms, when they are, you know, turning down, are, are you ensuring that each student is going to their assigned room? And, and that, you know, everyone's sort of bedded down for the night in the right place?
Absolutely. Yep. That, that's a check that we go through. You know, one of the, one of the policies that we have is that, you know, once that, you know, lights out, time is set, whatever that may be in the itinerary, all the rooms are taped so that if a door is open, you know, we would, we would catch it if we were, you know, maybe on a different floor, you know, making the rounds. And as Mr. Lanson mentioned, grand classroom does hire a security staff to, you know, be out in the hallway in the middle of the night so that the adults can get the rest. Something that we absolutely stay up to make sure that students are where they're supposed to be.
Really reassuring responses. Great protocols. Thank you so much to both of you for doing this for our kids. Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. Have a good night.
Now, I believe, I believe they want a, do they? So I think, yeah, they want, I think they require a vote. So is there a, a motion to approve the proposed Grand Canyon trips as described by Mr. Erlinson and Mr. Forten tonight?
So moved.
The motion is made by Mrs. St. Orange. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Dial. All in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Aye.
Mr. Dial?
Aye.
Kearney is absent. Mrs. St. Orange?
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan. That motion carries by a vote of four ayes. So thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you so much. Have a good night.
Thanks.
Have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I think that concludes the superintendent's report. I know, thank you, Mrs. Wonga. I think she's going to depart us now. Thank you for being here to support that part of the report and we'll see you next meeting.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Wonga. Thank you so much.
And I, I do believe, Leslie, that, that, that's it, right, for our report? Okay, wonderful. Okay, I'll leave it open to you.
Thank you, Dr. Sullivan. So, Mrs. Owen, that brings us to the finance report. Do you have a report for the committee tonight?
I certainly do. Can you, can I share my screen?
Yes, you're the, you're a co-host. You have the power.
I have the power.
It's not quite the same power of using Craig's name when you log in, but it's.
It's not.
That is the power.
I have, I have sent out the packet with all the standard reports, the school budget summary. You know, I send it out several different ways, tried to change it up a little bit so it's not so stagnant all the time. So I put it in a memo form this time. This is for the month, just for the month of May, what, what, what our budget looks like to date. So the information attached represents an updated, update concerning current budget conditions. The, the detail was attached in the packet. So we got in the school budget, which is the general fund expenses proceeding as projected. I mean, there's some areas that are over budget. There are some areas that are under budget, but that's typical. As long as our bottom number stays above zero, we're good. Salaries, salaries have all been encumbered at this time, which is, which is new, I think, to us. What I did do was I, I calculated with our payroll person how many, how many payrolls we have left. And I, I put it on what I call a dummy purchase order, just so that money is set aside. So I know we have enough money to run payroll. So there's no areas of concern with salary. When you look at the special education areas, those are some of the areas that we do look at frequently that we do have concerns because they usually unanticipated, you know, expenses to come through. So our spet tuitions are higher than expected. They're 1.3 million. The original budget amount for the tuition is about 1 million. This is a difference of about 258,000. It's a result of some unanticipated out placements and, or, and/or changes in outplacement. So either some of our, some of our kiddos that were in, in, in-house have now been outplaced or some of our outplacements have gone on to different schools that the tuition's a little bit higher. Not a surprise, tuitions are a number that moves frequently throughout the year and year to year. So I'm not, I'm not heavily concerned there. Also, the special department, the contracted service budget is a little bit higher than expected. It's about $175,000 is what we've expended so far. And the original budget was 27,000. There again, there were several, I believe there's three that I, that I know of off the top of my head, unanticipated legal settlements that happened throughout this year. Not, not necessarily that happened during this year, but we're settling this year. So it could be over the course of the last year or two that these agreements have been going back and forth. And we finally came to settlements on, I should say, Mrs. Wonga came settlements on them with the district. So again, special department is going to show that's a little bit tipped into the red. We also, you know, please note, we, we do have the sped stabilization fund, which is established specifically to cover any unanticipated special education expenditures in the event that we have no remaining funds at the end of the year. So that fund is there as a, as a backup plan. Hopefully just the year end funding will end with, we, we usually end with some funding at the end of the year. And that will be absorbed just by covering special education expenses. And then we took a look at utilities because those are, that's another key area that can, can really tip the budget. So in the heating, in the heating area, we've spent 85% through May. The month of June's been encumbered and it's estimated that we might have a shortfall of about $7,600. Not too bad. Not really concerned there as well. You get into the electric utility areas, we spent about 83% of the budget through May. Again, the remaining month of June has been encumbered and there's an estimated savings of about $9,700. So, I mean, overall, the utility budget will break even with a small amount of savings, about $2,000. So it's not, again, it's, it balances out. It doesn't affect our bottom number. And then circuit breaker, which is a reimbursement that we get on some special education tuitions and services. So total projected circuit breaker for the year is expected to be about $648,000. We've, it's based on a 75% reimbursement rate. To date, we've received three payments totaling $482,000. We expect one more payment prior to the close of the fiscal year. Sometimes after the end of the fiscal year, you get a fifth payment depending on what has been reported. So we won't know. We know we will get the 648. We don't know about a fifth payment until after June 30th. And then I want to touch base a little just on capital. Remaining funds for all the years in capital, I think it's really good to point out that we're, we're trying really hard to spend our money as we get it. If we ask for it, we should spend it. So there's about $62,000 left in our capital. There's about $3,500 left from FY18 from Crow Books. And in talking to the town accountant in the technology department, they're recommending to, to close it out, return that amount to the town because we don't, we're not going to utilize that money. That they obviously will probably reallocate it to something else, could be Chromebooks for this year or next year. Same thing with FY20, that includes some sidewalk and stair improvements that have been already taken care of. Upgrade to the bell system at the middle and high school and the purchase of Aspen, which is a student software. And again, you know, it's recommended that they're going to close out that account. The money will be returned to the town and probably reallocated. And then this year, we have about $44,000 remaining. Includes some ongoing projects. One is, you know, the middle school entrance is complete, so there's money left there. We have some money left in the special education wheelchair van. We need to put lettering on that van. And then the AC slash band room split has completed and that, that invoice is going through or has gone through a warrant in the month of June. So that 44,000 will pretty much be almost down to zero when we complete the year.
Sue, if I could just mention during the very hot days we had a couple of weeks ago, you'll all be happy to know that that band room and the two band rooms at the Deer Hill where that split was put in were like iceboxes. So it was perfect. It was really nice where those were the hottest places in the town of Cohasset in, in the past. So it was really nice to have those rooms sufficiently air, air conditioned. Sorry.
Oh, that's okay. Also, including in that is the Deer Hill courtyard doors. The, the money's been encumbered. The pots are on order. There's special made. We were promised it would be done in May or into June. My guess is it probably won't happen in the month of June. It'll probably happen in July because I haven't heard anything from facilities department that we've received the materials. So that's the final project for FY21. Other than that, we've pretty much exhausted and finished out most of our projects. Deer Hill courtyard doors will be the, probably the last one. And then we get into the grants. So not only, you know, do we have a school budget, we also, you know, support our district through grants. Today, we have a total of 2.1 million in grants compared to 1.4 million last year. Obviously, the difference in the grant funds, which is about $634,000, most can be attributed to the receipt of additional funding due to the COVID pandemic. So we've got, you know, multiple grants forwarded to us to help the district, you know, with the PPE and the, in the, in the setup and just all the COVID precautions that we've had to take. So that's the difference in the grants. The grants also fund approximately 14.7 FTEs of staff. So they, they do, it does play a part in our staffing. Next year, obviously, my guess is we'll probably go back down to the 1.4, 1.5 million, except for, I believe we are getting an Esther III next year. That will probably be the only COVID. That will probably be the only COVID grant unless things change. Right now, the COVID, you know, barriers are being lifted. I can't predict what happens in the fall. And then we also, you know, subsidize our district with revolving accounts. We collect fees for different things. So right now, it's showing a remaining balance of about 1.1 million. 119,000 of that are already deposits we've collected for next year. So we're already collecting kindergarten, preschool, bus, among other expenses. These accounts cover salaries for about 12.9 FTEs of personnel whose jobs are related to that account. So it could be athletics, it could be transportation supervisors paid out of our revolve-in, and so on. So, I mean, in conclusion, you know, even though 21 has been a really fiscally challenging year, and we've had to change things up day to day, week to week, hour by hour, based on what's been going on, we've been able to, with close oversight, you know, continue to maintain a balanced budget, and we'll be closing out the year in good shape. At this point, I don't know what year-end remaining funds will be. If any, I mean, if there are any, they will be obviously absorbed by the special education overruns of their accounts. But until we finish out at the month of June, first week of July, when all the invoices come in, I really won't know what's left. So that concludes the budget presentation. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mrs. Owen. Any questions? Mrs. Kaleri?
My only question, thank you, Mrs. Owen. I want to say I do really like this cover page that sort of summarizes the highlights as you see them, but I found that to be really helpful when reviewing this, so thank you for that. My only question is related to the overages on special ed tuition. And as that relates to our FY22 budget, do you feel like we are in good shape for next year, seeing, I mean, I don't know. I just want to know what your thoughts are, whether you think we've allocated enough money for that in our FY22 requests.
Yes, so Mr. Sawaka and I sat down and went through what the actual tuitions were for this year. Now, remember, when we budgeted the tuitions for this current year, it happened last year, you know, September, October, November. So changes happened during that time. So when we budgeted going into FY22, they're based on our app this year. So we should be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaleri. Mr. Dial, any questions for Mrs. Owen at this time?
No, thank you very much. Very, very, very detailed presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Dial. I don't think, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Kearney, do you have any questions for Mrs. Owen at this time regarding the budget monthly update?
It was a good presentation. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney. Mrs. St. Ange?
Thank you, Mrs. Owen. Love this layout. Very, very helpful to help my non-budget-oriented brain process this information. I appreciate it. My question is regarding the capital funds from FY18 and FY20, and there's the town recommendations to close out and return to the town. I recall voting on things like that in the past. Is that something that needs to be voted upon in the near future or discussed as a committee? How do we act on that?
So, good question. I myself had conversations with the town accountant on. And I said the same thing. I said, in past districts, as a school committee, I would recommend to the school committee that we vote to refund. When I spoke to the town accountant here, he said that's not the process that they do here. If we're done utilizing the funds and they're sitting there, they just take them back. So I'm going based on the conversation I had with him. And like I said, in past districts, I've recommended giving it back, and the school committee has voted to give it back. So I did question that when I spoke.
Yeah, so we have in the past voted in a subcommittee and then approved by the whole school committee what amount we were going to be giving back to the town. So that is not our process, or it hasn't been in the past.
Okay, so I can definitely, you know, maybe in the next monthly update, I'll touch base with town accountant again and say, you know, school committee's gonna vote to check the money.
Yeah, I recommend maybe us meeting in our subcommittee and then, you know, talking about moving it to the whole, which is what we've done in the past.
Okay. Sounds good.
Is that all, Miss Owen?
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious about that protocol. Thank you.
Thank you. Good question. I have no questions. Mrs. Owen, could you please include this executive summary memorandum with every monthly update from here on out, if you could?
Yes, absolutely. That is why I put it out here. This time, I mean, initially, when I first started, I was gonna take this type of style. It was suggested that, at least to get my feet wet and get on the ground running, I should try to keep the reporting similar to what the past business manager did, so that's why I followed the same protocol. But this is more of what I'm accustomed to doing, because reading through these reports are kind of boring if you're not a financial person, and you don't know what pops out at you. So I kind of, in this memo, put on there, pops out. So certainly going forward, if this
It's great. Great summary.
Not a criticism, just it's praise. It's helpful, and I think everyone recognized that, so it'd be great to have that from here on out.
Thank you.
Okay, does that conclude the monthly update?
That concludes the monthly update.
So Chair McClellan, our next item under finance, wanted to give an update on our kindergarten tuition. As everyone knows, we've been working to try to provide refunds that are appropriate and also that are economically feasible for us to do. I want to thank Chair McClellan for his collaboration with us to help us through this. I know Chairman McClellan, you might want to just say some things about where we are right now with kindergarten tuition.
Sure. I want to preface my remarks with the fact that, you know, some families have made it known that the committee's process or deliberation on this topic to date has been confusing or frustrating to them. And if that was your family's experience, I apologize. I take that as a personal failure. I think it's my job as chairperson to manage fluid meetings at which all concepts and topics are discussed and addressed with clarity and are addressed effectively. And so I will certainly endeavor to do better there. I do apologize if that was your experience. Just to summarize, to date, the school committee at the outset of the past academic year did indicate to our directive finance and operations that the issue of kindergarten tuition reimbursement was a priority to us. Obviously, acknowledgement of the fact that the 2019-2020 families were offered a reimbursement. We were interested in doing the same for this year's kindergarten families in recognition that they would have, at some level, abbreviated year. It was decided at that point that the most fiscally responsible and well-informed approach would be to wait to the conclusion of the year, so we could assess the status of our budget at that time and make a more informed decision relative to what kind of money we'd be able to offer in form of kindergarten tuition reimbursement. We, from there, addressed families' concerns that were brought to us, indicating that they would like it addressed earlier than the end of the year. We considered that, and while initially refused to do so, two meetings ago, had voted to authorize up to $500 to reimburse kindergarten families, the 2020-2021 kindergarten families, for a part of their tuition. That deliberation, during that deliberation, and as I corrected, and as Dr. Sullivan and Mrs. Owen corrected us last meeting, the deliberation took place during which some misinformation was innocuously conveyed. First, regarding the amount of the reimbursement to the 2019-2020 families was misstated by myself. I was operating with inaccurate information and said that the families were provided with a $500 reimbursement last year. And as I corrected last meeting, that was not accurate. It was $980. In addition, there's some confusion related to enrollment figures, only because the enrollment changed for that class, likely due to the pandemic, and went down to 98. Although it was at one point, I think it was, if I'm correct, around 112, Mrs. Owen?
110.
110. And that actually figure has come, returned back up now that we're sort of through the thick of things, so to speak. So that was, again, another innocuous error that was, while innocent, still could have impacted deliberations. And so for that reason, I have placed it back on the agenda tonight for the final review of this issue. This will be the last time the 2020-2021 kindergarten reimbursement, or tuition reimbursement, is going to be discussed or placed on the agenda. But at the last meeting when we corrected it, we couldn't deliberate on the issue because it hadn't been placed on the agenda. I know it was important to many families. So we had asked Mrs. Owen to look into whether or not any additional funds could be directed to that, given the misstatement of the $500 versus $980 figure. Mrs. Owen, it's my understanding you have done that and may have some information to report to committee. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
So what were your conclusions or findings?
Am I still able to share?
You are, yes.
So I went back and looked at our ESTER II. Also was informed that we will be getting an ESTER III. I couldn't utilize ESTER III because the funding won't come till after July 1. So I couldn't utilize any of that to help with the kindergarten reimbursement.
And just to interrupt, Mrs. Owen, we didn't necessarily know that it wasn't coming until that date. We thought it was initially.
Correct. Correct. So I went back and looked, and I put together a spreadsheet just to kind of make it clear of what, you know, what our original ESTER II grant was allotted for. So as you can see in the first column, it says the original, the 183,927 is the total grant. Initially, we were gonna use it for instructional technology. We were gonna use it for custodial salaries for next year, for cleaning, for high-touchpoint cleaning. We were gonna use it for PPE typo, PPE typo on my spreadsheet. Didn't catch that, sorry. So PPE supplies, materials. There's $10,000 of that grant that has to be allocated to psychological services. So you can see that 10,000. Sanitizing wipe sprays, about 36,000. Desk chairs, tents, rentals. We put air purifiers, about 45,000. And then we did have one student that still went to a remote school. So that was how we originally wrote the grant. And then when we went back, I went back and looked at it. And I came up with what I thought would be an accurate refund was the $500 refund. So you can see the $500 refund, we took away instructional technology. Talked with the technology department. We're pretty set between capital and what we purchased this year, so we could reallocate that money towards kindergarten, a kindergarten teacher. So basically, what I had to do is, rather than the kindergarten revolving account fund the teacher's salary, the ESTER II grant could fund the salary. And I did get permission and the okay from Destiny to do that. I definitely wanted that in writing from them to say, is this something I can do? Because they didn't get the service or the product that they would typically get, could we not charge them less? And they were fine with that. And again, the custodial salaries, when we found out we were gonna have an ESTER III grant, I immediately thought, okay, well, we can shift the custodial salaries to the following year's grant. So you can see in the second column, which says the $500 refund, the instructional technology and custodial salaries was $54,000. Just about covered a $5,000. If you look like down below, it says kindergarten teacher salary. So I needed about $52,000 to cover $500 refund per family or per student for the 98 enrollees. And then when we got into, you know, can I go further? So again, the COVID barriers were lifted. We're not in a state of emergency anymore. Talked with our custodians, talked, you know, talked with the admin team. Do we still need to set aside that much money for custodial supplies? And we decided that, you know, a school budget can cover a normal day-to-day supplies and materials for custodians and all those as. So again, I looked at that sense, and the 26,000 then got reallocated to head towards the kindergarten salaries to bring up 78,000 towards kindergarten salaries, rather than being charged to the revolving fund. And the 78,000 pretty much gives just about an $800, it's an $800 refund to 98, approximately 98 parents. It's give or take a little bit, just because some people haven't completed paying. So rather than getting an $800 refund, they would get, you know, a small refund if they're still making payments. And you can see, as you go down, we did make some adjustments. The 10,000 I couldn't touch. 10,000, like I said, grant says we have to spend on mental health or psychological services. We did, you know, we do have some money put aside for sanitizing and sprays and nurse supplies. It's 14,000. You can see the desk chairs, tents, tent rental, air purifiers. So that went from 45,000 to 79,000, and that number wasn't necessarily a choice of a change. It's after we submitted all of our invoices for all the things that we had to do to get everyone back we expended $79,000. So that was spent as soon as we started working on getting everybody back in full class. And then again, the one remote student for the $1,000. So we did shift things around. You know, I'm confident that at this point in time, we can definitely give an $800 refund just by reallocating our expenditures here. And, you know, like I said, we also have an ESTER III coming in. We have not applied for it yet. We have until, I think, the first week of October to apply. So as a team, we're trying to, you know, figure out what should we spend, how would that be best spent? And again, there are some stipulations for that grant as well. There's more stipulation, you know, more mental health, more closing the learning gaps. So there are certain stipulations for that grant. But at this point, I think the $800 per student is definitely doable. So that's my recommendation, if that's, you know, if that's the direction you want to go.
Thank you, Mrs. Owen. Questions or deliberation, because we will be voting on authorizing an $800 reimbursement. Mrs. Kaleri?
Nothing for me. Thank you.
Mr. Dial?
Apologies if this is a question that's been rehashed, but I'm new, so I get to do these things. Was there a target amount? I'd see we're able to circle around 800. Was there a target amount that we were looking for or that parents were requesting? How does this fit with parent expectations?
Well, that's a good question. The answer is that I guess the best way to arrive or quantify that figure is to figure out what the per diem value, so to speak, for kindergarten would be, given the total amount of tuition. So you figure out how many days the students were not physically in person, because, you know, as you remember, you know, in the beginning of the year, they were there two days a week, then it was, you know, three alternating days. And then as of March 1, we were back full-time. So you figure out how many non-in-person days there were, remote days, excuse me, and you and then, or excuse me, you figure out how much, given how many school days, you divide the total number of tuition by number of school days, figure out how much a day of school is worth, and then multiply that figure by the number of remote days. And you arrive, I've done the calculation, it's around $910 for 2020-2021. This, what we've asked Mrs. Owen to do is arrive at a figure that she thinks is the sort of optimally responsible figure to offer. And it looks like, you know, we fall about $100 short of what maybe parents can, you know, expect as a maximum reimbursement, given the solution or product that was offered to them in consideration for their tuition dollars. And so, but that said, I think Mrs. Owen has detailed how she came across the money, and, you know, without completely depleting every resource, you know, I guess she's saying that $800 is that figure. Mrs. Owen, do you feel that that's the sort of, you know, the most fiscally responsible figure at this point in terms of the maximum payment to parents? The most fiscally responsible figure at this point in terms of the maximum payment to parents?
Yes, yes, because because, I mean, we, I don't know what's going to happen in the fall. I don't want to reallocate too much money and not have enough to cover if we have to go back to remote or distancing or high touch cleaning. I mean, I I need to leave us some leeway in in case we head back in that direction. Because the school budget certainly cannot afford to absorb that.
Yeah, S O three is really a safety net for a lot of things, which which includes, you know, working on learning gaps, which we have to dedicate some of it to, but. It it really is a situation where, you know, they're giving, they're going to hopefully give us this money. And we don't know if we'll receive any other funding, and we have to have it because of, you know, we don't still know what's coming.
And I mean, we did go back and forth through, you know, the refund last year of nine hundred and eighty versus a refund of eight hundred this year, and and the parent. Families last year. They they got a little less. Service than what the parents did get this year, because you remember back, I think it was March sixteenth last year, we just abruptly. Basically stopped. And didn't have a, didn't have a well set plan to how to give kindergarten kids remote learning from March to June last year, so we did sit, I mean. Pat, Frank and I sat and we basically counted out days to see, you know, was an equitable amount of days, and and the. The parents last year did receive less, not that that makes, you know, it any better, any better. When you, when you go into the per diem, what the actual amounts are, but the parents last year also did not get what the actual amount of a refund should have been based on per diem. So. I I think this is probably the most I can do. At this point, and I don't, I don't think I can go back, and I'm not sure that Destiny will let me go back and re re amend the grant again for the third time.
That that's very helpful, thank you, and this is, this is a thorough analysis in in my opinion, so thank you for the work here.
Thank you, Mr. Dial, Mr. Kearney. Mr. Kearney, you're breaking up a little bit, are you, can you hear us?
Can you hear me?
No.
You can hear that last break.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. You know, it's, it's a, it's a tough situation, and it's because, you know, teachers have paid and you have to pay them, and the money's got to come from somewhere, and. Unfortunately, we're one of the districts, and I'll say it again. Fourteen percent. And we're, we're happy about. I think a lot of us have made, trying to make kindergarten free, and that would be something in the future. I'm just, I'm just grateful that we we were able to come to some kind of conclusion on this, and I want to thank everybody for working hard on this. You know, this has been something you had to go back and forth with as well, but the good news is that. We won't have to really deal with this, other than coming up with some good solutions as a community that we can offer free kindergarten. That's a conversation that I'm willing to to talk about.
Agreed, and and, you know, Paul, during our, you know, our budget preparations for next year, we, you know, we, that is a priority. And and we did, you know, allocate, I think, twenty, at least twenty five thousand dollars to help reduce tuitions for the upcoming school year, so it is definitely a direction we're heading in.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kearney, Mrs. St. Orange.
Yes, thank you, um, Sue, I just have a quick question. During your overview, you said something like it comes out to roughly eight hundred because, you know, not all, not all people have paid, so. Are people who have kids who are full time kindergarten and owe full tuition, I understand that different families have different situations. Has everyone paid what they owe?
No. We're still, we're still, we have, I mean, we've collected the majority, we probably have a handful of people that are on a payment plan. And they they have to have it, they were supposed to have paid, have it paid by June thirtieth, so, you know, for instance, you know, someone offered, they owed a thousand dollars. And we're going to make a money order up for a thousand dollars, I said, could you just hold off until we have this conversation tonight? So we're not, you know, refunding that person back some of that money. Now, you know, based on the vote tonight, that person can make their final payment, and it will be two hundred dollars if we go with the eight hundred dollars, so it's, you know, we have a couple like that.
Okay.
So not every single family is getting the full eight hundred unless they've paid in full.
Okay, and so everyone who owes is in communication with you and has a payment plan?
Yes.
Okay, I guess I just wanted to make sure in like a scrooge kind of way. That we're not offering refunds before payments are made.
Absolutely not, no, I said it's approximately, just because we have those families that are still making payments, so. Obviously, they'll either get a partial, they'll get a partial refund or no refund based on what they owe.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I think that, yeah, that answers the the other note that I had made to myself, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. St. Orange, to me, there's just a few considerations going on here, you know, there is acknowledgement of family concern. There's acknowledgement of an abbreviated learning product that was offered in exchange for the same amount of tuition than perhaps the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen families paid. There is concerns of equity, equity not only between twenty nineteen, twenty twenty families, but twenty and and twenty twenty and twenty twenty one families. But also equity in terms of, these are district wide grant funds that are being applied to reimburse, you know, less than ten percent of the district. So you have to consider that as well, and then there's a consideration of how we. Address this overall concern in the future, which Mr. Kearney touched on, and which we are endeavoring to do by. Looking to build a little bit more of the kindergarten program. Into our annual budget, and slowly, we will chip away at that thirty five hundred dollar price tag, and eventually. The idea is to offer free kindergarten here in Cohasset, as I personally believe it should be, but nothing happens overnight. This was certainly a a large effort, and this involved, this is a great example of a lot of family involvement. People felt very passionate about this, they came to us, and while they still may not be satisfied, I feel that we have adequately addressed their concern. And at this point, I would ask for a motion to approve.
Chairman, call him, if I may, just ask one other question of Ms. Owen. Ms. Owen, you you alluded to it, a point that I think is is compelling, you alluded to that the the per diem rate that the. Twenty, the last year families, I'm not going to do the numbers, but the last year families may actually be lower than the per diem rate that people are getting in this reimbursement, did I hear that correctly?
Said that again, I'm I'm not sure.
I'll I'll answer, I know what he's asking. The answer to the question, Mr. Dial, is, so what Ms. Owen was saying was that. Twenty twenty, excuse me, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty families were, if you calculate that sort of strict literal. Per diem figure, they also received a reimbursement that was less than that exact calculation would come out to, and in fact, it was somewhere around, it was. One thousand one hundred and twenty five dollars, I believe, it was somewhere just over eleven hundred dollars. They were provided with a nine hundred and eighty dollar reimbursement, so whereas this year's kindergarten families. Might suggest that nine hundred and ten dollars is what the exact amount of reimbursement for the remote days were. Similarly, they're, they're, they're receiving a little bit less than that figure, so I think that Ms. Owen was just trying to illustrate that there's some equity. On that level or to to that effect.
That that's what I thought I heard and wanted to make sure that that was clear to to everyone, that it does seem like the last year families and this year families are are on a substantially similar footing in that regard.
Yes.
So unless there are any further comments. I would seek a motion at this time to approve the eight hundred dollar kindergarten tuition reimbursement as articulated by our Director of Finance and Operations.
So moved.
The motion is made by Mr. Kearney, is there a second?
Second, Lydia St. Orange.
Seconded by Mrs. St. Orange, all in favor, Mrs. Caleri.
Hi.
Mr. Dial.
Aye.
Mr. Kearney.
Aye.
Mrs. St. Orange.
Aye.
Aye, Craig McClellan, that motion unanimously carries, and so, Ms. Owen, we would ask you to please. Issue those eight hundred dollar reimbursement reimbursements to our kindergarten families.
Thank you, my pleasure, we we were just, we were just waiting to see, you know, what the vote was going to be, and we're going to work on the warrant, probably starting tomorrow.
Okay, so we we consider that matter closed with finality at this point, and we will not be discussing the kindergarten tuition reimbursement any further. Are there any other, are there any other matters in the finance portion of the agenda, Ms. Owen?
No, thank you.
Mrs. St. Orange, did I see you just raise your hand?
Oh, yeah, I just wanted to kind of say to families, it takes a little while to get those checks out, because that's a lot to process, so. Just be reassured, the money's on its way, it just takes a a little bit of time, especially if you're at the end of the alphabet. To get that check from personal experience, just so you know.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Owen, for your report, we turn now to the next agenda item, which is the School Committee section, and as Ms. St. Orange has been eagerly anticipating, we will be soon. Doing our subcommittee and liaison assignments, in fact, we'll be doing it right now, so. This can sometimes get a little belabored, but. Hopefully, you were able to review the current subcommittee and liaison assignments that were in your packet. That item number was F one. Did everyone have a chance to look at those, Mr. Dial, you familiarized yourself with those, okay? Obviously, Mrs. Mars' assignments will need to be, will all need to be changed. And then some folks may be happy with the current constitution, and some may want to switch. I know that Mr. Dial has expressed an interest in being involved in the collective bargaining process. And Mrs. Caleri has, I think, expressed at some point an interest in or a willingness to concede that position, so that may be an example of where individuals can replace one another. So I guess we'll just start at the top of the list and and go from there, and hopefully we can do this quickly and effectively. The Policy and Standards Subcommittee generally deals with our policy revisions, as we've seen, Mrs. St. Orange and Mrs. Caleri have done a great amount of work with this this year. And they've been revitalizing, revamping our policies. So that they're not sort of stale, and they've been doing a great job, I don't know if both of you. Are willing to continue that work or or what, I mean, you've been working.
You that work, and I would really like to continue working with Mrs. St. Orange, if she's willing to do it, I think we make a really good team, and Dr. Collins is super helpful and willing to attend our meetings, and it seems like. That combination has been really working to produce some. Good productivity in our policy areas.
Well, unless anyone feels strongly, I I think that it makes sense to keep that intact, especially where you guys have familiarized with yourself with the policy so much more than maybe others.
Yeah, I feel like we have great momentum right now, I'm more than happy to continue.
Okay, that is easy, if anyone has any objection to anything or wants to jump in, just jump in, because that's the easiest way to do this.
So also, Mr. Dial, do you know that? Any, the subcommittees need to be only two members of the committee, you you probably know this already, okay, thank you.
No, but thank you, please don't assume I know anything, because that's always the safe assumption.
Next is the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, and Mr. Kearney and I were on this committee in the past. I am happy to to remain on it, I'm also happy to concede my role if someone else would like to serve on this, Mr. Kearney, what's your position on this?
It'd be my pleasure to serve with you as well, unless someone else wants to.
Okay, so both of us are willing to concede our roles, if anyone wants to do this. Let us know, basically, you are meeting with Dr. Sullivan. It's like two to three times a year throughout the year to go over his goals and help develop those and evaluate those, and obviously, you know, Superintendent Evaluation. This this culminates with the annual evaluation of all school committee members, but this committee helps Dr. Sullivan, you know, form goals, keep on track. And there's a, you know, at the beginning of the year, there's mid year, and then there's a final review, so. If anyone has any interest in doing this, speak now, otherwise, Mr. Kearney, myself will remain on that. Okay, we'll keep that intact, collective bargaining, this is going to be an important year for this committee, this subcommittee. The, we we did agree to, as as we've announced previously, a one year rollover to the C T A's. Contract in light of all that's been going on, it was a difficult thing to, obviously amidst all the pandemic response, engage in collective bargaining. So we rolled over the contract for one year, which means we'll need to start, we'll need to commence with bargaining for the upcoming contract cycle with i in the fall. And this is a major, major undertaking, it's a very important undertaking, it impacts, it's extremely impactful. And has far reaching impact, you know, effects on on the district, and so. It it requires, it also requires a lot of time. It's time consuming, the meetings are, you know, oftentimes in the middle of the day, there sometimes they take several hours. And there are multiple bargaining sessions, so. I, I know that Mr. Dial has expressed interest in doing that, and or Ms. Caleri has, you know, willingness, expressed a willingness to concede her role, Mr. Dial, I think we should consider you on that. I I would also like to remain on this, or excuse me, I I wouldn't be remaining on it, Mr. Kearney. You're on it, I don't know if you're willing to concede your role, or if you want to stay on it, I I, the reason to articulate to you why I want to get on it is because I. Spent so much time in the impact bargaining this year. And I'm familiar with the the players and much more familiar with the process. And I I would like to stick with it if it's okay with you, but I'm certainly not going to push you out if you feel strongly remaining on it.
I I think it's great to let some some other folks have a chance, and and I would have no problem conceding my role.
Okay, well then, Mr. Dial and myself will will. Will take that responsibility up, okay, Mr. Dial, sound good?
Thank you.
Sounds good.
All right, Finance and Facilities, Mrs. Mar and Mr. Kearney were formerly the two subcommittee members, obviously, Mrs. Mar needs to be replaced. Finance and Facilities is a fairly aptly named subcommittee, so it's kind of clear what it addresses. Budget and the facilities. And, you know, needs for capital improvements, minor improvements with the facilities. And and, you know, obviously, they go hand in hand with the budget, so. It's an important subcommittee, and I know Mr. Kearney was very involved in that last year, Mr. Kearney, would you like to remain on this?
Um, yes, it would be my pleasure to serve, it definitely is an important committee, and and these are, I think. Most important that I've been seeing out of this committee is when we all do meet together, I think. Were able to go, I know it's a subcommittee, but it it is an important subcommittee, so. I would just ask everybody to, you know, if they could make any kind of meetings for this, because we're going to need a lot of help, because. We're going to need some answers to a lot of questions that Ellen already knew.
So I I did have some subcommittee descriptions too, that I I probably should have, I meant to read them as I did with the reorganization. And I feel like. It's it's never too late to start doing this, this, the Finance and Facilities Committee was formerly known as the Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Now, just read the description, the Budget and Finance Subcommittee is one of the most active subcommittees, scope of responsibility includes working with the Superintendent Director of Finance and Operations on. Capital budget requests, budget objectives and messaging, fiscal budget, current year spending, fees, and we should add, you know, evaluation and or improvement of facilities, so. Paul, or Mr. Kearney, we can leave you on there, is there anyone willing to replace Ellen on this commit, on the subcommittee?
I I'm happy to volunteer.
Okay, Mr. Dial will. Put you in there. Thank you, lastly is the Security Subcommittee, this was formerly Mrs. Mar and myself, the Security Subcommittee primarily works with the Cohasset Police Department and School Resource Officers to periodically suggest updates to operating protocols and procedures. Regarding the safety and security of our students and staff. In addition, this subcommittee will vet and provide input to the Budget and Finance Subcommittee, the Superintendent and the Director of Finance and Operations. Suggested capital expenditures to install, enhance or upgrade new or existing security measures on our campuses. Subcommittee most typically meets in executive session under exemption number four, which is safety and security, of course. So does anyone want to volunteer to. Serve on the subcommittee?
I'd do that, Lydia.
Okay. You're in. Would anyone like, would anyone else like to serve on the subcommittee? You're in. Would anyone like, would anyone else like to serve on the subcommittee?
Do you want to do it? Weren't you on it?
I I I was, but you know what? I I've decided after doing the chair position for a year that I'm I'm good with shedding as many subcommittee roles as possible. It's a, it's a lot of work that I.
What do you feel like this committee asked of you as far as a time commitment?
It's funny. Not much because there were so much other, there were so many other like safety meetings that we were having like town-wide because of the of the pandemic response. That I I don't know that there was a really need for a district specific because it was all. Dr. Sullivan and I were constantly meeting with town officials regarding safety and security.
Yeah, weekly.
Yes, so I I don't, and that wasn't the subcommittee, so I I I don't know. But I would imagine that this would be like a, probably a quarterly review or a quarterly meeting, you know. I don't have, in some of these subcommittee descriptions, it says how much the subcommittee meets. This one does not give a particular amount of times. But.
Okay, well, I'd be happy to sit on that also.
Okay.
And I would just remind you that we also have a Communications Subcommittee. You said lastly, that's the only reason. I know you know that, but you just said lastly.
Yep, and I even have a note here, communications, and still said that, so thanks. We.
Chairman McClellan, may I, may I pause just for a question and maybe this is not, this is not for this, this, this point. But is there an evaluation of, you know, whether we have the right subcommittees? Like, for example, if this one is just meeting quarterly, could its function be handled through regular, full committee meetings? And that way we relieve ourselves of one subcommittee.
Well, it's funny you mention that because there's also the Safe Schools Committee, which, which, which also reviews, among many other things, similar. So there's a lot of overlap there. I I I think it's probably necessary still to have a subcommittee related to security. Because in some instances, it is logistically appropriate or beneficial or advantageous to have some conversations at the subcommittee level within the idea of making formal, formal recommendations to the whole committee. And again, you know, remember that that a lot of these meetings take place in executive session because of the obvious confidential nature of the subject matter. So I think it would be difficult to, because then we'd constantly having to be moving into executive session during the regularly scheduled meetings. But I, listen, any suggestion that you ever have to streamline these meetings or in any way, always make them. Because it's it's something that we need constantly paying attention to because I I really do think that we can move these things faster. So Communications Subcommittee, I know that was newly established. Thank you to Mrs. Kaleri. Mrs. Kaleri serves on it. I imagine Mrs. St. Ange does with her, but I don't know. I don't have that in front of me. Okay, so it, are you, are you two, I think that everyone would probably be comfortable with keeping you, as that's a new committee, subcommittee. It would make sense to, again, keep you in that role. Are you both comfortable with that?
Yes.
All right, so let's keep that the same for this year. And we'll reassess at the end of this year, this upcoming year. Okay, that does it for the subcommittee assignments. Representative liaison assignments. First are the the school councils. I was formerly the Oz Good School Council. That that's, I'm fine remaining that unless anyone else has any, I I I'm willing to concede it. I just, you know, Principal Farrell knows that I'm on it. I I think that it, she's just probably used to including me in the chain. But if someone wants to do it, feel free. I'm I'm all, I'm all, I'm totally willing not to, not to do it.
Yeah, I'd like to keep the high school too, if everyone's all right with that.
Yeah, I'm sure Mr. Kearney wants to keep the middle school. Although, are you, or where, what age is your kids now? I forget, Mr. Kearney.
No, 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 it's fine. Middle school is great. Yeah, that's great.
And Mrs. St. Ange, what do you think about Deer Hill? Or do you want to, you want to?
I'm happy to go either way. I know that Mr. Dial has one child who's at, who will be at Deer Hill, right, next year? So I'm happy to, if you would like to be on the school council, you may. And if you do not want to, I will happily stay.
So, Mr. Dial, the school council is, this is a, this is a liaison. You don't have like a a voting role. It's really liaison sort of communication-based role, sort of to keep the committee aware of the goings-on of the. Of that school council and obviously to create that link between school council and and the committee and and bring, you know, the committee's updates to the, to the school council. So it's more of a representative role. It's not overly time-consuming, in my experience. If you'd like to serve on that, you may, but it's it's up to you entirely. I mean, you've, I will say this, by by virtue of your, of your interest in the collective bargaining subcommittee, subcommittee, you have signed on to an extremely time-consuming endeavor. So you may want to factor that into the overall calculus of these volunteering opportunities.
Right, and 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 that was kind of in my, in my head. So I have no, I don't have a burning desire, Ms. Ange, if you, if you want to step away, I'm happy to fill, fill the role. But if you're willing to stay on, I'm, I'm happy to focus my efforts on other things.
Okay, so I'll leave that as is. PSO, I'm happy to still be the, one of the liaisons. Mr. Kearney, you are the other liaison. Are you happy remaining in that position? Okay, and and by the way, at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Kearney, I neglected to, I I recognize Mr. Dial's. Election to the school committee. I guess I was just so excited about the, the, the new personality here that we have. I I neglected to congratulate you on your reelection and and thank you for your willingness to continue serving. I think you're a really important. Part of this committee and you bring a lot of value and I've really enjoyed working with you for the last three years. And I was really happy that you, that you agreed to do this again. I I think, I think a lot of parents view you as a very accessible. Member and and I think you bring a lot of relevant family concern to to the mat. So thank you for for staying on with us. I look forward to the next, to the next year at least, working with you. We'll see what happens to me.
Well, I I echo those sentiments. Thank, thank you all. Yeah, thank you all. That's so nice. And I just got to tell you guys how excited I am for this new team and just, it's, it's exciting. The district's excited. And Lance, again, congratulations. And and yeah, I'm ready, I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work too. I I think this is going to be a great year for all of us and, you know, to see each other the other day was fantastic too. So again, it's going to be nice to see all you guys too.
All right, and you got a short-sleeve shirt on, so you're already.
The only point I'll, I'll just make is that I will note for the record that that both of us received more votes than blank space. So thank you, everyone. It's going to be a great year.
Well, well, part, part of, part of it is, is the willingness to 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 serve. It's, it takes a lot of time. And and, you know, yes, I mean, you know, obviously, if you guys weren't both doing it, you know, there'd be a concern that we wouldn't have five members. So, and it's really important. So I'm just glad that you two are willing to do it. I, Mr. Kearney, you seem to enjoy the elder affairs. Do you want to keep on doing that?
Yeah, you know, I, that, and anybody can help out too if you want to. I'd like to bring back the silver sneaker, that's a silver sneaker. Why do I say that? It's because I'm in the business of that. But I think it's called the skipper pass where folks that are seniors get to watch some of the sporting events that we have in town. So, you know, that's something, and it, you know, I would need a little help trying to promote that. So if anybody's interested in serving with me, you know, that's, that's all up. Because, you know, it is a, you know, it is something that we'd like to do again with the seniors reading to the kids. That's something my kids got to do and they'll never forget it. And that's something I'd like to bring back. I think that the senior population is a huge asset to this town. And I'd like to, you know, if somebody would like to work with me to try to, you know, just try to get a better experience. Because, you know, we need those folks and then we need them in our, in our lives, a part of the community.
All right, well, if anyone wants to.
I think, Paul, maybe one suggestion is that we might work closely as a communications subcommittee with you and figure out ways to help promote the initiatives that you want to implement.
Awesome. Yeah, that'd be another, yeah, that'd be great. I'd love to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney, your willingness to stay on there. Special Ed PAC or coming, it was CPAC, that was formerly Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Kaleri did express an interest in her willingness to do this. Mr. Kearney, do you feel strongly one way or the other about staying on this?
Well, I'd like to have, if if we could have two members on it, if that's okay. Because, yeah, I, I, again, I, this is one of the most important committees that are out there. The, the committee that it, it, you know, looks out for our kids that need special attention. And it's been my pleasure to serve and, you know, especially during these times of, you know, there's a lot, been a lot of regression. You know, going backwards for these kids. And, you know, I I I'd like to be a strong advocate for them and if somebody could join me. I know some of the meetings are at 10:00. They're, it's, it's not easy for some folks. I I tend to make those 10 o'clock if I can. So if anybody would like to join me on that committee, I'd, I'd appreciate it.
Okay, so I'll just put Ash, Mrs. Kaleri and Mr. Kearney there for that. Media, Mrs. Marr was formerly the point of contact. I'll replace Mrs. Marr on that. I think that makes sense. For me to do that as chair. Legislative liaison, Mrs. Kaleri, I think you usually, you you enjoy that. You have some established relationships. You and Mrs., Mr. Kearney were formerly the legislative liaisons. I know Mr. Kearney has interest there too. Would you two be willing to stay on there?
It'd be my pleasure.
Okay, Safe Harbor Coalition, I almost don't even need to ask Mrs. Kaleri if she's willing to stay with that. But does anyone want to join her?
I just want to thank her. That's a great committee and it's a great organization and I can't be, I'm so thrilled about the whole Safe Harbor.
A lot of these I'll attend when I can, but I I don't want to just lock myself in. So we'll just leave Mrs. Kaleri for now on that. CEF, Mr. Kearney, do you, are you comfortable staying on there? Okay, great. Emergency Management, this was Mrs. Marr. We, we had a lot of these meetings that I attended with Dr. Sullivan. I I I'll, I'll replace Mrs. Marr on that. Hall of Fame, I I don't remember hearing anything about this for the last two years that I've been on the committee. So I don't even know if it's still sort of a thing or or what, what, Dr. Sullivan, do you know anything about this?
Yeah, it it is a thing. I I don't think that we had a class last year, now that I think about it. But it is every, it's on the books as every year we have a Hall of Fame class or it might be every couple of years. But it is a, I know that Ellen in the past had stood on that committee, I think as long as I've been here. So I I don't, I don't know. I don't know if it's a reserve spot for a school committee member or not. But it is an existing thing.
Okay, does anyone have any particular, you know, specific interest in this? I I I am, I I can't imagine it's, it's too time-consuming. I'll, I'll put myself down.
I can, or Mr. McQuillan, Chairman McQuillan, I can, I could do that. I feel like as a, as a, as a skipper, you know. Might as well jump in there, right?
Completely into it. That's great. Okay, moving on.
Skipper, always a skipper.
Always.
Warrant review, that I think is appropriate to leave me there as chair. Post-employment benefits subcommittee, this was formerly Mrs. Marr, Mrs. Kaleri. Mrs. Marr needs to be replaced.
I'm, I'm happy to, to, to join that.
I'd be happy to let Mr. Dial tackle that one without my help. I'm sure I won't be useful at all.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have Mr. Dial. I I don't, yeah, I don't think, Mrs. Kaleri, you were taking an active role in it anyways. It was really one-person show. So, Mr. Dial, that's helpful. Thank you, sir.
I didn't know I was going to be alone when I volunteered, but I I guess I'll, I guess I'm stuck now.
So it happens when you're capable.
In, in, in turn, well, I'll, I'll, I'll always assist you if there's any need for it, Mr. Dial. Don't, don't, don't feel, don't feel left out in the cold. Internal scholarship, this was formerly Mrs. Marr. Is there anyone willing to deal with the internal scholarship group? Represent the school committee there.
What is that exactly?
It's a group that gets together with other educators, mainly at the high school, but to just determine recipients of scholarships that are local scholarships that are donated locally.
I'll do that.
For graduating seniors.
Okay, Mrs. St. Ange is in it.
All right, awesome.
Congratulations. AEC, Mrs., as we all know, Mrs. St. Ange was our prior liaison. Mrs. St. Ange, I don't know if it makes sense for you to just keep doing that or if it was too much. I know it was kind of involved for you, so what do you?
Normal, like, monthly AEC meetings are fine. It's because Mrs. Owen and I did that. Extra solar study thing, so I'm fine just being the liaison to the AEC. And then if things ramp up with solar again, we can, I mean, I I already know what's going on.
Okay, good, great, thank you. Long-range planning group. Ellen was formerly the, the liaison here and obviously she needs to be replaced. So is there anyone willing to do this?
What is the long-range planning group?
I am not certain. I am hoping that Dr. Sullivan may have some input here or insight, but I I don't know. I I almost thought that when I saw this, I was thinking of the strategic planning that we're on. Because I don't, long-range planning, as to the town maybe, so there's like a, I I don't know if that's.
I think it's a town-connected committee for a town's long-range fiscal plan, possibly. I may have to call Ellen on that one, just to make sure. I, it's not the strategic planning group, I I wouldn't think.
No, I know that. It just made me think of that sort of thing, but.
I don't remember updates from that committee ever, to be honest with you, like in the time I've been here in Cohasset, so.
This sounds like my kind of committee. Long-range planning, where you just pontificate and you can, you can give no updates, that I'm, I'm all in.
I, I, I mean, I just may, I may have blocked them all out. I don't know, but it is.
I just looked it up. It says, "The long-range planning group was formed to provide guidance and insight to elected officials. It will comprise two members each from the Board of Selectmen, School Committee, Capital Budget Committee, and Advisory Committee."
Okay.
All right.
I can, I can raise my, my hand for that and I think that dovetails nicely with Finance and Facilities.
All right. So. I'll, I'll, I'll do that with you, Mr. Dial.
Unless, Paul, given that there might be a nexus, I don't know the meeting times, but there might be a nexus with the Finance and Facilities Subcommittee work we're doing.
No, it's, let's, that's fine. Let's just leave it, let's just leave it there. You, you and I, Mr. Dial, and then Safe Schools Committee. I I would like to concede my role here because I'm going to be doing a lot of other things. And it's, it's, this is a great committee. This focuses on all elements of safety, not just like physical plant, like physical facilities, you know, security, but social, emotional well-being, you know, substance abuse, peer pressure, bullying. All kinds, it's a really great group, really engaged group, big group. It, it didn't meet last year during the pandemic.
It will, it will again, you know, it, it's a committee that is, it's a standing committee. So it's always there if we have a particular need. But this coming year, I'd like to keep it going a little bit, particularly in relation to our strategic plan. And some of the, the compass points on that is they have to do with safety. And then it's just a great committee for community involvement, to listen to them and to make sure that we structure our schools to be as safe. And we, we really have a broad definition of safety. It's, it's not just physical safety or school safety in terms of security. It's also social, emotional safety, anti-bullying, making sure that, you know, we're, we're tying into Safe Harbers to help students avoid abusive drugs and alcohol. So it's a, it's a pretty wide-ranging committee that really moves on community voice. So I will get that going again next year.
So, Mr. Kearney, you're currently on it. Do you want to stay on it?
Uh, yeah, it'd be my pleasure.
All right, we need one other person. This is a great committee also because it's a, it's a, there's a student-laden commu, committee. The school, what's that?
I'd like to do it.
Great, okay, so we'll put you down. And then the Diversity Committee, I do not need to ask Mrs. Colery if she wants to remain on that. I don't know if. I don't know if anyone wants to join, Mrs. Colery. I, I will from time to time probably join in, but I think Mrs. Colery probably handled this well on her own. But if anyone wants to join in, just let, let me know, anyone? Okay, so we'll leave that as is. That is great and thank you for, Mr. St. Ange just told me that the Long Range Planning Committee last met in 2018. So that is why, that, that I, I did not know what it was because.
Right, that, that makes me feel better a little bit.
So, um, thank you for that and, okay. Uh, so everyone happy with those? Before we move on, everyone satisfied with the subcommittee and liaison positions as we just articulated and agreed? Okay, let's move on to our meeting. Sorry?
So sorry, there is the Wellness Committee, which I'm a part of and we've done some really good work with Dr. Scollins that I'd like to stay on if everybody's good with that.
Sure, that's, that's kind of your jam, Mr. Kearney.
And what I've done is I've compiled a little, and a list of all the people that are a part of it and, and what the wellness, wellness policy is. So I'll be sending that to each and every one of you if that's okay, so that you guys all know what we're doing over there. Because, and we'll talk about it later in the meeting, but there's some exciting stuff going on in that.
And it really makes sense because the Wellness Committee and Safe Schools Committee really dovetail, and even Diversity Committee. So it's nice that, you know, on the Safe Schools, it sounds like we're gonna have Paul and Ashley and those, those committees that you're representative of really dovetail into that larger grouping. So that, that's, that's totally appropriate in my book.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's keep on moving, guys, because we have a little more to get through and, and this meeting should not take us too, too long. So the next item is the, is the meeting schedule. So turn to Agenda Item F2, the calendar that was included. And we just need to, I don't, what is the next scheduled, uh, school committee meeting?
We, I don't think we have one.
Yeah, we don't have one on the books. This, this is what.
That's what we're planning.
Craig, I don't know if it'll help, but I could put the calendar on the screen if that would be helpful to us.
Does everyone have it in front of you? Do you have the, yeah, no, just leave it, Dr. Sullivan.
Will do.
Okay, so we're meeting tonight and then we didn't have one for the rest of June. Well, it's either we meet on June 30th or July 7th. Where do we want to start it?
July 7th.
I, I actually, I can't do July 7th. Sorry.
Well, we can sometimes deviate from Wednesdays if we need to.
Now, though, you could potentially have a meeting without me, I guess, but.
What, what about for that week, Thursday, July 8th? Can people do that?
No.
Okay, are you on vacation that week? Okay, I, I feel like I'm, I'm playing a game. Yeah, exactly.
It's okay to go out to the 14th during the summer?
Sorry.
Here's, uh. Yeah, I guess, I, I want to make sure we have a special ed meeting in the summertime and then I also want to make sure we have enough time to, like, August is when we're sort of really talking about, like, you know, there's a lot of operational issues, we're looking forward to starting the year, there's, I, I, things come up, so I feel like.
We have to do handbooks, handbook has to be done.
Well, I guess we could do, to me, yeah, I guess July 14th and July 28th could be the two July meetings. And then August 11th and August 25th. Does that sound okay to people?
Yes.
Into August 11th.
You can't do them?
But you can do a meeting without me, I mean.
We don't, we, yeah, we can, we can, it's, it's more.
I'm just wondering if maybe the 4th and the 18th, and then we're not going back-to-back as school and like teachers are coming back and all of that. It just gets very busy that last week of August. And the 4th and 18th might help us to have things done before people are back in school mode.
Do you want to do back-to-back meetings? So July 14th started there and then do July 28th and then another meeting on July, on August 4th? And then one on August 18th?
I mean, it's gonna be back-to-back somewhere in there no matter what, right? So.
I'm fine with it. I, I do want to have, make sure we have that many meetings in the summer.
No, will they be at the same time? Will they be early on the day?
Uh, we're gonna do them at 6:00 AM.
Isn't that when you feed your horses?
I'm up at 5:00, so I'll be ready for 6:00.
Alright, good.
That could be a challenge for me.
Yeah, Ashley would be executing her vice-chairperson role as presiding over the meetings frequently if we start them at 6:00 AM.
On the west coast.
Alright, so let's just do this. Let's do, let's do July 14th, July 28th, August 4th, August 18th, is that good?
Excellent.
Alright. Alright, September.
So September 1st is our all-teachers opening day. Remember, September 8th is our opening of school day. Just so you have that.
Could be appropriate to have on that day.
I think September 8th might make sense.
Alright, let's jump to September 8th. September 22nd, everyone good, everyone with us?
So we're changing both September dates?
Yeah, now, remember, September 8th does have some Rosh Hashanah.
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we, we're, because we're not in school that day.
No, we're not at school the 7th. Rosh Hashanah goes, I believe, the 7th and the 8th.
It does, I, I conversed with the, with the rabbi on this issue and it was noted that the, I think they were described as liberal practicing Jews only observe the first day and not the second day. So it shouldn't interfere with that. So. So yeah, I guess we'd be cha-changing both dates and then we'd be going back to the same dates in October.
What would be the dates in October, Craig, I'm sorry?
Well, so September would be changing both days. I really like the idea of having a meeting on the first day of school.
That's the 8th.
So, yeah, so then we go 22nd and then we do October 6th. We're back on track with the previously noted, or, or the, how we did it on the calendar here. Because the 6th is underlined and bold. October 6th. Then October 20th, is this alright with people?
Yes.
Okay, November 3rd, November 17th. No, December 1st, December 15th. January 5th, January 19th. Groundhog Day in February 16th. March 2nd, March 16th. Then there was a back-to-back situation in April previously, but we could actually do March 30th and March 13th. Then we'd be shifting a lot more.
March 30th and April 13th?
There's already a meeting on April 13th.
No, I know, but you said March 30th and March 13th.
Yeah, March, March 30th and April 13th, yeah. So we could do that or we could just do the back-to-back and.
For what is rather, I like the idea of keeping the every-other-week cadence. So March 30th fits better into that.
Okay.
I, I agree. I feel like it's nice to have the rhythm.
Alright, March 30th, April 13th. That brings us to April 27th instead of May 4th. And May 11th instead of May 18th. May 25th instead of June 1st. And then June 8th instead of June 15th. And maybe we can just schedule the 22nd now. We should be in good shape when we're doing this next year. Does all sound good to everyone?
That's great.
Okay, so is there a motion to approve the meeting schedule for 2021, 2022 as we just discussed?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Dial, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Kearney. Mrs. Colery?
Hi.
Mr. Dial?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Ange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McLellan, that motion unanimously carries and that is the set meeting schedule for the 2021, 2022 year. Moving on, I believe we are moving to the policy revisions as presented by our policy subcommittee. That is F3. Though I think actually Ms. Colery submitted those to us via email, is that correct? I, that's how I got them.
That's correct.
Correct.
Okay, alright, so did everyone get those and print them out?
Yes.
Okay, so Mrs. Colery and Mrs. St. Ange, I turn it to you to sort of give your, your summary and highlight anything that needs special attention.
So I think, Dr. Scollins, feel free to jump in here if you like. But we met at our last policy subcommittee meeting with Dr. Scollins and Mrs. Sarwanka. And it was in order to ensure that the policies that are relative to tiered focus monitoring are up to date, Mrs. Sarwanka has to file paperwork with Dr. Scollins, help me, that Dussie and the state.
Yes.
And received some feedback about some of our policies in our binder and so requested that we review that feedback and consider altering our policies according to it. And so that's what we did. So those proposed changes are in this policy binder. We did. This non-discrimination clause that has been added to a number of policies is the same non-discrimination clause that is currently on our district website. So that's not a new policy, I mean clause. It's one that was provided to us by council. The second, well, I guess first, does anyone have any questions about the first section of policy recommendations?
I, I do and I'm gonna apologize in advance because this is like one of my wheelhouse things. It, it looks like, just using File AC, non-discrimination policy as an example, we're, we're, we're changing the policy language that came from council. I have no objection to it as, as an outset, but I guess, is there a material difference between the language that's being replaced? Or the language being deleted and the language is being put in? When I read them, they seemed fairly substantively equivalent. So I'm just wondering, is this just a language exercise or is there a substantive edit that I'm missing?
Homelessness was missing. So homelessness, we had to add in.
Okay, perfect.
That was the advice, correct?
Correct.
We didn't.
Yeah, and I think what's happened is as that the policies themselves, not always was it updated when the non-discrimination clause was updated. So that's where you'll find some places where we had to add homelessness because that had not been added in or some things around gender identity, some of those pieces. So that's what you'll, so that's really the majority of what we needed to do.
We also plan as a subcommittee to revisit these policies in a little more detail. I felt like, I felt badly giving them to everyone yesterday. I apologize, I just wanted to make sure because it was Mrs. Sarwanka's approval process was hanging in the balance. We just didn't want to delay anything too significantly. But we do want to revisit these policies because we do believe they're really, obviously, very consequential to the district and to the students and families that we serve. But for now, these are the, the revisions that we suggest based on the feedback that Mrs. Sarwanka got. So we didn't want to queue in the weeds with everything.
Right, in order for us to be compliant. So it doesn't necessarily mean that it's, that there isn't more to do on the policy like Ms. Colery said, but, but there were pieces that were missing and that were identified that we needed to update.
Okay, can I make a suggestion? Because I think these are, these are all obviously extremely important policies. And if you're saying, Ms. Colery and Mrs. St. Ange, that we are going to revisit them and, and yourselves and Dr. Scollins have just articulated that we're essentially bringing them up to compliance with the, along with collaboration with council. Why, why don't? I, I feel like. Unless, I mean, I feel like this has been reviewed by several folks already and I'm, I'm, I'm just, we're, these are just, these are, if I'm, if I'm correct, these are compliance-oriented edits and not necessarily substance at this point. But we do intend, and correct me if I'm wrong, it seems like we intend to revisit the actual substance as well.
Correct.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't we vote on them as a whole in terms of the current edits? If anyone saw anything, because I, I did notice that it was essentially compliance-oriented and, and I don't think there's anything I'm gonna have any suggestions on, but I was caught up in the, in the fact that I, I, I feel like I want to review all of these and substance of them. So why don't we just vote on the, the compliance edits at this point with the intention of revisiting the substance at a later date?
Can I, can I ask one specific, a question, one specific edit? On the student-to-student harassment policy, which obviously very important. Was there any discussion about the, or what was the discussion about the inclusion of via electronic or social media and where the school has jurisdiction to require people to submit to their policies or not? I just am curious if that was a discussion that was made because obviously important and I want it subject to this policy, but I want to make sure it's, it's, you know, been discussed.
So I, someone correct me if I'm wrong, but as far as policy, we outline our expectations of the district and the handbooks are where the discipline is laid out. So our expectation as a committee is that our leadership will consider our policy when creating disciplinary procedures for students if the need to do so arises. And so the inclusion of electronic or social media in this policy is not necessarily because we want the district to police social media or electronic media. It is just a fact that in 2022, sometimes this bullying happens via that media.
Yeah, and Lance, just for your information, the, the handbooks are set actually by the school councils. So it's the leadership plus family members and, and staff members, leadership and staff and the family members balance. So it really is a, it, it's an effort that the school councils do. So school councils do, do that and they also do the school improvement plan. But one of the things that we are gonna be assuredly doing is making sure that we put the same policies in every handbook. And of course, there are other policies. Not every policy is put in the handbook, but we reference, you can find other policies here. But there are certain key policies that each handbook will have that are common. And we're almost there now, but this year's round will definitely get there.
And the handbook and the school improvement plans are presented to the school committee as well when they're.
That's right, and they're voted in by the school committee. Handbooks will be done before the start of school, but this year, because, just so Lance, you know, we're, because we're in a cycle of doing our new strategic plan, we'll actually wait until November so that the teams can get up and running with their new councils to present those school improvement plans.
Great, thank you.
Lance, this is also a very appropriate time. If you have suggestions for maybe stating something differently. If you have suggestions for maybe stating something differently based on your experience, we're all very open to hearing that. It's completely appropriate. That's what obviously this conversation is for. So don't feel like you can't make suggestions for amendments to what was presented.
Oh, I appreciate that, and I have no suggestions. Either because I like the language as it is, or, you know, don't yet have the background. So I'm happy with, with these as presented, but I'll formally say that, and I imagine just a few moments.
Thank you.
As, as these are sheer compliance related adjustments to the language, I, I think, you know, it makes sense to maybe take a motion to approve these with the intention that we will be revisiting.
Well, I just want to be clear, sorry, Chairman McCollum to correct, I just want to be clear that electronic, like there are, that electronic media addition is not specifically because of feedback Mrs. Sarwanka got. Like, I just want to make that clear before we move forward.
I, I guess that's one, that's one example, I didn't see many others, though.
There aren't.
And, and yeah, so that, that, so that's one example of a substantive revision, but again, if we're reviewing the policy again, I mean, we don't, in other words, what I'm trying to avoid is a comprehensive discussion right now about when, when everyone received these, just I think yesterday, about the substance of these, I don't want the decisions made now, they're really important policies. But obviously, as they, they need to be compliant, it's important that, as you stated, we don't delay the improvement, approval of that too long, but we can always go back and look at the substance of these. So I, that's really what I'm trying to do, but I appreciate you saying that because it's not like all, every single, but that was the only substantive change. So I think it makes sense to vote on this group of, of, of this round of compliance oriented changes. And then with the intention of revisiting the substance at a time where all the members have had a chance to completely review the substance and content of these policies. Does that make sense to everyone?
It does.
Okay.
I just want to also ask, are we going to approve the first group and then the policy related to finances, or are we going to approve the whole binder? I just don't, I want to make sure we address that.
Okay, I was intending to approve the entire binder, but if you think there's a reason why we shouldn't do that.
Nope, I just wanted to, I just wanted to highlight that those in the first group were made by Mrs. Sarwanka based on recommend, well, you know, the majority of them based on feedback that she received. But the second, there's like a little delineation between sections here on the cover sheets. Policy J J F is because the middle school and high school, when they were separated, they had a joint activity account, and so that we need to, by policy, separate them. And so the town accountant and Mrs. Owen have both asked us to do that, have weighed in on this decision. And the highlighted part of that policy is the recommendation that would change. So it changes from having the middle high school account have a certain limit to the limits that are separated by line item in the revision.
Okay. All right. Does everyone understand that? Okay, is there a motion to approve this binder as presented by the policy subcommittee dated June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty one?
Am I allowed to make that motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Motion made by Mrs. St. Orange, is there a second?
Second.
Standing by Mr. Kearney, all in favor, Mrs. Cleary?
Hi.
Mr. Dial?
Hi.
Mr. Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. St. Orange?
Hi.
Hi, Craig McLowan, that motion unanimously carries, so those revisions will be adopted. Thank you, ladies, for your work on that. It's much appreciated, so let's certainly revisit that, though, when we, that's important, those are very important policies. So let's do that. Moving on, I don't have a, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, we're moving on to the, I'm skipping an agenda item. The, the FY twenty one goals. Mrs. Cleary, I think you indicated that you might be able to take the lead on this discussion.
Yes, I just now have to find the document that I was working on as it relates to that.
Would you like to be, me to make you a co-host to share?
No, I just need to find the documents, I made some notes, thank you, Dr. Sullivan, I just want to, okay, here we are. Got it. Okay, so we were greenlit on many of our goals. Mr. Dial, you may not be, this is, I think, based on our work over the last year. And we welcome your thoughts on how we've done on these goals. So, so please feel like your input is appreciated here. But there are a few that may not directly relate to your time on the committee, so.
What we're doing here is reviewing our goals. In the near future, we'll have a workshop or two to form our upcoming year's goals. You'll obviously be a part of that process. And this is basically what we, you know, seek to accomplish as a committee from year to year. Mrs. Cleary is going to present right now the outcome of our, sort of the, the annual review of the goals that we came up with at the beginning of last year, how we did, and what goals maybe remain, what goes or works in progress, what goals we accomplished. So, Mrs. Cleary, start of the interruption.
So actually, I stand corrected because I was just thinking, as I was reading through this one more time, I just did my review yesterday and it didn't occur to me. The one that we had a yellow on under human capital is each school committee member attending or participating in an activity that demonstrates our collective commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion within the district. And I think as evidenced by our very enthusiastic picture, celebrating pride together, we can get that a green. Okay, great. So the one that says negotiate and ratify the CTA contract through FY twenty four school year, I'll just leave that yellow because we did a lot of negotiating and a lot of rep, like, you know, contractual, we made a lot of contractual progress, but we didn't specifically get that done through FY twenty four because we decided not to. We have green goals in communication and collaboration, safety and security. In finance, we had one yellow, but that was continuing school improvements via capital budget process review and reassess long-term capital plan developed by the district in two thousand and eighteen. Anyone have any thoughts on that?
Well, we did make a lot of headway in some capital improvements. But in terms of the review of what you were talking about, I don't know how much the review of the process, I'm like, what was that part again?
Review and reassess long-term capital plan developed by the district in two thousand and eighteen.
It's that long-term planning thing coming up, rearing its head again.
It's now come back from no meetings to twenty eighteen and we've already got work now that I'm on it?
Thank God you're here, Lance.
This is actually done in the, this is done in the finance and facilities subcommittee where we look at our capital needs projected out. We, we've been doing that along the, along the way. And as you remember, this year, we received an unprecedented amount of funding from the town capital committee. So I've just given you that information in terms of our, our planning around that.
Okay, sounds like you're giving us a green light.
I know, I was wondering about that because since town meeting, all of that was approved, like everything that was on our list was, was approved, right?
Yeah, we almost have to, we still have, no, well, there were some matters that weren't, for instance, the, the paving of the sidewalk and the cracks, there are some, but the items have definitely shrunk because we had an unprecedented amount approved. So we're definitely going to have to, that I would imagine would be one of the first things we do in the new budget and finance committee is really look at our capital needs and reassess them afresh based on the fact that we have received so much funding this year. Which is a great problem to have, by the way, but.
I think just leave it yellow so it carries over, Mrs. Cleary. I mean, we, I think we made a lot of headway on it, but it sounds like there's some more work to be done and that's, that's fine.
Okay. Under student achievement, we had a goal to have spotlights and reports from guidance, nursing, and adjustment counselors on the social emotional wellness of the students during the pandemic. And we had a red on that. And I think we got to keep a red on that. Right? And that's okay. Okay?
I'm wondering if, I'm wondering if on some of our summer agendas, we could, we could have some of those groups check in with us because we will have experienced a full year and they can give us some reflection on that. You know? Like in the moment, it's harder to have our data, but they can tell us about it after. Does that make sense? They're given silence.
I mean, it makes sense, I mean, I understand what you're saying, I mean, I it's kind of a weird, can you read the, I don't have it in front of me, Mrs. Cleary, can you just read it again?
Spotlight, yeah, through spotlights here, reports from guidance, nursing, and adjustment counseling on the social emotional wellness of our students during the pandemic. So that implies to me, I think, through spotlights that we would invite them to come into.
Well, yeah, I mean, over the summer, some, some of those folks don't necessarily work.
Right. Also, here's a question, do we plan?
Good.
Go ahead.
I, I, like, those, those particular individuals, like, they're, I don't know that would have been welcomed for them to have to do that. I mean, I think that we indirectly accomplish this through, through our work with the leadership team. I mean, they're, they're getting that feedback and we're responding to those things throughout the year. You know, especially this year, you know, given all the concerns with, you know, social emotional wellness. I mean, just constant checking in with the nursing staff, counseling staff. I don't know that it was a red light, it was just not, there wasn't a direct, direct sort of spotlight and, and, and you know, report from them at school committee meetings, but frankly, I think that's probably better. They were really, they were, I think they felt very overwhelmed with everything this year. And I don't know that it would have been that welcome to have to report to the school committee. I think that that was done indirectly through Dr. Sullivan and Dr. Scholons.
Well, we did have workshops for families around social emotional wellness. We had Dr. Babudo and Dr. Plummer come in, we also had
Right.
our district doctor and town nurses working with them. And we had, at, at every level, we had some sort of situation where we had guidance counselors working with parents and students, and it was highlighted in most of my newsletters too, but we did not, just in full transparency, we did not do a spotlight on that. It wasn't one of our student spotlights.
Remember, we also did, you know, Mrs. Sarwanka is also involved regularly at the meetings now. That's something that was a shift from previous years. And so student services, as we all know, doesn't just embrace special education. It also, the whole point is, is it also services student needs surrounding social emotional well-being and student wellness. So I think by virtue of our enhanced involvement with the director of student services, we also indirectly, you know, addressed this. Whether we accomplished the goal or not, I don't know, but, so I'm not going to say we got a green light on this for sure. But I, I don't know that we didn't do anything. I think that, given the circumstances, we probably did the best we could. I don't know that those folks would have wanted to prepare for a presentation with the school committee. I think a lot of the information was flowing to us anyway, but we can, we can, we can, I mean, we can, we can, why don't we just leave it, why don't we leave it yellow, Mrs. Cleary? And we'll consider that as we formulate our next goals next year, how we might better, we might better wordsmith that goal to reflect something that's a little bit more attainable, but still satisfies the same objectives.
Now, one thing we may, might consider is early in the year, doing some sort of a spotlight where we have some of our counselors talking about how they've been preparing for students, you know, coming back in, in, after, obviously, the summer and.
We're going to.
Yeah.
We're already doing that, we're already planning on it. We're doing this, we're doing the special education, like student services meeting, so I mean, that'll be part of it for sure, I think.
Very true.
So, you know, I think that'll, that'll do it. So let's just leave it yellow, Mrs. Cleary, and, and, and I think that we'll be accomplishing that in the fairly, you know, not too distant future.
Okay, the other thing that we had yellow was a student-led roundtable conversation. And I remember when we talked about this last, you, Dr. Sullivan, told us we should feel free to move forward on that. But we just haven't yet.
No, green, green light, because I participated in the student, this, we have, we, Dr. Sullivan established that student, you know, superintendent's advisor, I don't know the name of it.
You got it, it's the superintendent's advisory council, it's actually the school committee superintendent's advisory council.
Right, so, so we established, that's been established, and I sat in on that, that is, that is exactly what that is.
You were in a couple of.
Yeah, so that's a green light, and we need to continue to do that, and it shouldn't just be me all the time. It's an awesome, Mr. Kearney would absolutely love that.
It's your committee too, you're welcome to come anytime, and I'll, I'll be more communicative about when those meetings happen next year.
I'd be interested in joining one of those.
Yeah, yeah, you'd love it too, yeah, you guys would all love it, you're doing this because you have a passion for the kids. So you, it's really fun to hear, it's like, it's like, it's just the best, it's great. It's like makes you remember why you're doing this.
I think one thing that we talked about when we were discussing that goal was even broadening, making it a bigger table, I guess. And that's such a great committee to have, like group to have, but I, I remember Mrs. Cleary bringing up and a few of us talking about like different, I don't know, bringing in just a broader representation of kids at some point as well, which I think we can strive for. But it's so nice to have that group of kids who is organized, who can share ideas, is an amazing resource and a great source of student voice. But I do think it's nice to also broaden that conversation at some point in some way, and perhaps that will become easier as we can meet in person.
Well, I also, yeah, I also think that might be a nice role for the safe schools committee too, to, to gather more voice regarding how students are feeling within the, you know, the schools and how they're doing. And maybe that can kind of move into, to school committee as well. But if you're looking to talk and hear the voice of more students, we can certainly arrange that in, in some format within the student advisory committee.
So, so I think that's a green light, Mrs. Cleary, I, I mean, I want to, just don't forget, guys, all we're doing here, because we're going to have the workshops on formulating the new goals and what we want to do in the coming year. So let's just, all we're doing is quickly reviewing the, the goals, what we accomplished and what we need to still transfer over to the coming year. I mean, I, we will have plenty of discussion about upcoming goals and how we work those, and some of them will relate to the yellow lights. But I think we're just trying to, you know, sort of ascertain how many green lights we have here and what we need to still focus on. So keep going, Mrs. Cleary.
The last one is continue public recognition of student achievement. We had a yellow for that.
I, I think, I think we should keep it yellow. I, I think there's other ways we can probably figure out to do that, a better job of that. I mean, this was a difficult year for that, but, so let's keep it yellow because it's a wonderful thing to, to focus on. And so that will, that will transfer that over to our other goals.
Yeah, the spotlights, I believe, need to be very student-centered and very much centered around some of that. But we can always bring kids in who, and we did this, not so much this year, this past year, but
Little bit.
A little bit, the first year we did a little bit more of it, where we talked about some students who had done some achievements academically. And of course, acknowledging some of our sports teams who had done great. And we can definitely expand that and make the spotlights much more student-centered than they've been. That's sort of a goal as we move forward, I would imagine, with the committee, it's certainly one of mine.
Okay, so is that it, Mrs. Cleary?
It is.
All right, perfect, thank you for doing that. If you can, if you wouldn't mind finalizing that and just like sending it around to the committee in the next week or so, whenever you have. Thank you so much for doing that, that was, that was really, really helpful, thank you. Okay, moving on, school facilities committee, no update. From my understanding, we're going to be meeting next month in July. So the select board and town moderator have a lot, there's like a flood of, an influx of applications here. And all of a sudden, there's, there's additional interest, so that's great. And I think we're going to have, you know, a fully manned committee next month when it meets, have more substantive updates next month when we meet in July. I don't know that there are any reports, are there any reports, Mrs. Cleary, reports from liaison committees or, excuse me, liaison assignments or subcommittees? Any reports?
Yes, I would like to report that we showed the loving movie on Saturday night at Alumni Field. Thank you, Cohasset Public School. Thank you Cohasset Public Schools for hosting that event that the diversity committee and Safe Harbor collaborated on, thank you, Mister Kearney and Mrs. Saint Ange for being there. Thank you all committee members for being there at the photograph to celebrate Pride Month. Um, I just feel like so grateful that we are really celebrating our differences in June in Cohasset, so thank you all.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Colery, Mister Dial, you do not have any reports, um, Mister Kearney, do you have any reports, sir?
Uh, yes, we uh, the, we talked about earlier about the wellness committee, um, so excited about um, and Dr. Scollins, if you want to kind of chime in a little bit here, um, we were um uh able to get a second grant for the second year, um, there's twelve members of the board. We're gonna be adding on a families, and we're gonna be adding on some um, some more of the community. Uh, and Dr. Scollins, if you could touch on that a little bit?
I I think, I think she did earlier in in her report, uh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, because you were just dropped out for, but she had, she had, and she had invited your input, but uh, but that was just during the time, the end of the time where you weren't here, Mister Kearney.
Okay, so I just wanted to re- reiterate how happy I was to to serve on that, and I'm looking forward to the next meeting.
Okay, perfect, thank you, Mister Kearney, uh, Mrs. Saint Ange?
Yes, um, yep, we um met this week with uh the communications committee, met with Lisa Radden this week, we're in ongoing discussion of um website updates and um Dr. Sullivan had sent out a survey in the navigator, and then it was resent out directly via email today, and um, already the response rate has been way up, so we're just getting that feedback from, from, from leadership, from teachers and from families, um, so that we can take all of that data along with anecdotal data and start to look at how our district website can be updated and best serve our our school community. So good progress.
Awesome, thank you for that update, Mrs. Saint Ange, um, I, well, I do have an update, superintendent evaluations. Um, I have not gotten the evaluations, so send me the evaluations so that we can evaluate our superintendent. Do it, all right.
Doctors, can I make a request on that, can I make a request on that, I'm sorry, Dr. Sullivan, can you just, do you have a document that you can send us easily that just has your goals in it?
It's me, you're.
Yes, I have, um, I I do, I can send you my rubric and my goals, I have um some large binders that, uh, actually Lance asked a good question, if I was able to put them in a digital format. I can sort of work on that too, if you want to see all the evidence.
I don't want to see all the evidence, I just want to know what, because I've been digging through my email for days and days and days, and like, you know, a search for Sullivan and goals obviously produces a lot of results.
I will, I have a, I have a concise uh version of, like, basically just a rundown of my go, basically, I presented most of this at the formative. Remember, my formative was a little later than the average formative, but I appreciated you guys allowing me that little wiggle room. But I will, I I added to that, and I will resend that, what it does is enlist my goals and all my achievements with the goals, and then it lists actually the rubric that you'll be using to evaluate, and I've listed those things there too.
Putting that at the top of my inbox will get that to Craig like.
I'll send it to all of you, I mean, the, it doesn't tell the full story that some of the evidence does, but it 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 hits the highlights, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it, and I apologize for the delay.
Remember, my deadline was a little bit earlier than last year, so we're still not too far off track, so, so, okay. Um, approval of minutes, Mrs. Saint Ange, I don't think there were any, yeah, this, okay, so nothing to do there, no topics that weren't reasonably anticipated by myself within forty-eight hours uh in advance of the meeting. There is a reason to move into executive session, that's reason number three, which is um, strategy related to um collective bargaining. So I sent you all a separate zone link, and the subject was something like executive session zone link. Um, I just sent it this afternoon right before the meeting, so what we're gonna do is uh either Dr. Sullivan or Dr. Scollins or both, can you just remain on this meeting?
Yes.
Um, and um, then using your personal device or something like that, utilize that link that I sent you, so you can join the executive session and just make sure everything is muted on this, and all the school committee members can log off and just log on to the other zone, and then, um, but before we do that, we need to make a motion to move into executive session for uh reason number three or purpose number three for strategy related to collective bargaining, is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Mister Dial, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Saint Ange, all in favor, uh, Mrs. Colery?
Hi.
Mister Dial?
Hi.
Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Saint Ange?
Hi.
Hi Craig McClellan, motion units to carries, we'll move into executive session, so um, I'll see you guys in a second, okay, give it like one minute, and I'm and I'm not even thirty seconds, just to let me open it up, because I gotta start it.
Bye, Dr. Scollins, uh, I'll stay on executive session, have a good night.
All right, thank you.
That's a shame.
Uh, okay, let's, let's go here.
Ooh, Bobby, Lydia.
There's Mrs. Saint Ange.
We're getting much better at this, guys, just as they're taking the leg.
Just in time to.
That was very smooth.
Uh, Doc Sullivan is Dr. Scollins, she's, she's gone for the night.
Dr. Scollins, yeah, she had to go.
Okay, perfect, uh, we are, we have resumed regular session at eight forty-five. Um, we have reached the end of the agenda, unless there are any other items, uh, is there a motion to adjourn at this time?
So moved.
By Mrs. Colery, I'll take Mister Dial simultaneous concurrent motion as a second, segmented by Mister Dial, all in favor, Mrs. Colery?
Hi.
Mister Dial?
Hi.
Mister Kearney?
Hi.
Mrs. Saint Ange?
It's a muted eye.
Stop it, Mrs. Saint Ange.
Hi, hi, sorry.
That motion is the carries, and Mister Dial has successfully completed his first school committee meeting, congratulations. Okay, guys.
For your patience.
Thank you so much. It was, it was good, it was good, good start.
Good night, everybody.
Guys, thanks.
Thanks, everyone, good night.
Wonderful night, thank you.